Good evening. Thank you to everyone who has joined us for the April 17, 2018, meeting of the Buncombe County Commission. We'll call the meeting to order. And let's begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Every year on April 22, people from all walks of life, from around our country and from countries around the world, celebrate Earth Day. This is a day for people to come together to celebrate the creation that sustains life on our world and to recognize our responsibility to be stewards of the creation. As we gather this afternoon on this beautiful day, thankful that it seems that spring has finally arrived again, let us remember how fortunate we are to live in these mountains in this very special part of the creation. Let's have a moment of silence before we start our work this evening for silent prayer and appreciation for our mountain home that we have inherited and to dedicate ourselves to caring for it for our children and for those who will come after. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. And thank you again for joining us for the commission meeting this evening. I'd ask that everyone please silence your cellphones.
Good cue.
Right on time. All right. And I'd like to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the board today? There being the none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on all items that are voted on by the board tonight. All right. We now move to the consent agenda. And I will ask Mr. Frue to again share some information with us about the item that you asked that we add to the agenda. Yeah, please come up and talk us through the issue.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we're here today to ask the board to accept the lowest responsible responsive bid on the new construction project about to occur up at the landfill, which this board previously approved for the project and the funding. What we're trying to do, and this is really sort of a kickoff, for it's been the tradition of the former county manager to use various elements of the budget ordinances to simply confer power to the chairman or the county manager or either of them to accept bids for construction projects once they're part of the budget and they've been approved by the board. When you read the general statutes carefully and we're moving to take away those elements from the budget ordinance, we have situations where we generally have a needs assessment, approvals by the board for funding, then we put together the bid package, and we evaluate and assess the bids, and then come to the board for a formal bid acceptance. And this situation here, the lowest responsibly responsive bid for the project is Young and McQueen for $1,187,770. If you have any particular questions about the project, we have our director of the landfill, Chip Jingles, here today, or perhaps Jim Holland could answer. But that's what we're asking for approval. It's previously approved by the board for the project and the funding. And this is just to accept the bid and authorize the execution of the contract and to proceed.
So Chairman, I would suggest, given the short notice of this and the detailed answer that we're receiving here, that we've agreed to accept it into the consent, correct?
Yes. Well, no one, well, we're talking about it right now, so on a certain level we have. But we don't have to approve it. I mean, if there's, I think we'll only approve it if it is a consent item.
Well, yeah. What I was going to suggest is we put it on the consent agenda, but once it's on the consent agenda, we move it to the main part of the meeting so that this information would be provided to the public that way.
Yes, sir. It's just as appropriate to add it under new business as it is.
So we can do that?
Okay.
All right, cool.
All right. So is that a motion to add this item to the regular agenda for the evening? Yes. All right. All right. There's a motion in a second to add this to the regular agenda item. And any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right. We'll add it to the regular agenda. Why don't we take it up? Why don't we take it up under new business? Thank you. Any other items? Commissioner Beachrara?
Yes, I just want to take a moment. The final item on the consent agenda relates to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. I'm the board of commissioner member who serves on that, and just want to take a moment to appreciate and recognize the work of all the community members and different agencies that serve.
I had my microphone off. Who serve on the JCPC. There's a lot of, it's a very involved process, and folks take that role very seriously. And there are county staff involved with that, and so many different partner organizations. So just want to hear, you all to hear from us, a thank you and appreciation for that service.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I so believe.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Youth Opioid Summit Report. And Zoma Pofu with Community Health, HHS, and Imani Mosley of Asheville High will give us a report on the success of this summit. So thank you for being with us, and please join us at the podium, and we'd love to hear from you.
Good evening. Yes, last Thursday, we had the opportunity to finally host a six or seven months in the making student summit on opioids. So we were so fortunate to have the buy-in and support of our Buncombe County principals and administrators who in August said, yes, we want to welcome this in-school support. We want to welcome students to be able to have focus groups, to really be able to tell us what do they know about opioids, and how do they want to get involved in the solution? So throughout the fall, we had our Mayhex school nurses who helped support student focus groups where they really shared what they know, what they don't know, and also helped to carve out what a summit would look like. And that's exactly what happened on Thursday. We had students from 14 different area schools, that included Madison County, primarily Buncombe County, every high school in our county, as well as East Henderson. So in addition to helping to kind of carve out what that curriculum would look like, they also were our primary media managers. And so from holding the camera to developing the, our logo for the conference, as well as actually doing social messaging on various platforms, this was all student-driven. Shortly, I'll introduce Imani Mosley. Not only was she one of our core spokes students, is also a media manager, she's also going to be entering this fall Central University, and she's also Miss Asheville High. So we were so fortunate to have such well-rounded, such talented, and such engaged students in this. So the big takeaway is what happens next? So I just want to share with you three outcomes. We produced entry and exit polls for the students. So that day, they told us immediately, what do they know on about 10 different measures about opioids as well as addiction? Three important numbers. So in terms of, is it safe to share? We had an increase in 22% of understanding from our students in the dangers in sharing medications. In terms of the morbidity rates, or excuse me, the mortality rates, they learned that actually there's more people that are dying from opioid addictions rather than car accidents. And there was a 45% increase in awareness on that. And then finally, in terms of the addiction, for that, is it hard to kick the habit? We had a 27% increase in awareness on what the risk of addiction is. So thank you so much, and I'm going to yield the floor to Imani.
Great. Thank you.
First, I'd like to say thank you all for letting me report back on the student summit to you. So a little background about it, we really started in like 2017 during the fall into planning and all that other things. And myself being involved in the School Health Advisory Council for Asheville City Schools in Buncombe County, I'm the student representative from Asheville City Schools. And from there, I was recruited to be in the focus groups who helped give more input about the summit. And then during like spring, on Thursday, we finally had the summit where I was the opening speaker and also worked as a media manager as well as a participant. And like, as we know, the opioid epidemic is impacting everyone. And in effort to learn and engage with the students as well as adults, we decided to do the summit. And as a high school student, I felt like it was really that we should focus with the students because it's becoming an epidemic that's starting to affect the youth more than it is adults. Because personally, I had, I know someone who had overdosed and passed away from an opioid overdose. And so here's an overview of the summit. That started in 2017. A wide variety of students were chosen by school administrators to participate in the focus groups. And the focus groups were led by the school nurses and throughout our schools. So the summit tracks followed the head-heart-hand framework. And the head was to learn and learn the adverse psychological and biological impact of opioids. The heart was to how it can impact your dreams and like your relationships with other people. And hand was helping to get involved and knowing when to say something to someone if they have an issue. The logo was made by Noah Watson Pratt, and who's also a high school student. And leading up to the event, myself and many other students stepped up to the role as media managers. Myself, I was in charge of social media. So I had Twitter, Instagram, and I was in charge of like making a geo story on Snapchat, which is like when anybody in the area that was at the summit could participate and post to that Snapchat story to highlight anything that they found as interesting. And we made a Snapchat filter, and we developed hashtags that we could use for tweets and on Facebook and on Instagram to try to reach our governors and even like people on city council, as well as some youth commissioners. We were also encouraged to engage with students from other schools. So a big thing that we did was, we tried to mix people up as best as we could by giving them random numbers and assigning them to have, to talk to people that were outside of what they were used to. So there were 80 students there. This is our first summit, the first one in Western North Carolina, and which is, we were really ecstatic to have 80 students from 14 schools there. They were all from Buncombe County, Asheville City, and Madison. And then we all got the chance to learn more about each other and not only like each other's schools, but as well as like the health policies that all of our schools have and how we can bring them together. Something that I found really interesting was that I was able to learn more about the psychological dealings with opioids and why people take them. And then like once they take them, what they can do to your body and how people get addicted. And that was really eye-opening to see. And we also got the chance to have, listen to many people who had gotten over an opioid addiction, and listen to how their lives were impacted and how they're starting to rebrand themselves and get their lives back together. The students were encouraged to share their experience at the summit with their leaders at state and national level. The social media managers and student post during and after the event were liked and retweeted by the U.S. Surgeon General, Dr. Jerome Adams, NC Attorney General Josh Stein, and NCDHHS Secretary, Dr. Mandy Cohen. So we really made it to like a big impact, and I was happy that I could be like on the board to spread the word. And we also wanted to open it up to like see if you all would think that we can continue this and make it an even bigger summit. And like for next year, as the years goes on, because we're trying to like increase everybody's knowledge about it, and instead of reaching only Western North Carolina, we want to reach the whole North Carolina, things like that. So thank you for this opportunity to report on the summit, and any questions that you all have, I'll be happy to answer.
I was sorry to miss it, but thank you for the initiative and the vision and what you all are doing. You probably saved somebody's life by doing what you're doing. So thank you.
Of course. You guys have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's brilliant and much needed. So thank you very much. It's one of, it's one of this group's, you know, most important priorities as a governing body, and we know that the most powerful solutions are going to be found within the community in efforts like this. So thank you so much for what you're doing, and keep it up. All right. The next item on our agenda is the real, the North Carolina Real ID update. And Blake King with the North Carolina Department of Transportation will explain what the NC Real ID, that will make it more convenient when you need to board a commercial airplane or visit a military base or other federal facilities. And beginning in 2020, federal agencies will enforce tougher security standards at airport check-ins, federal buildings, military installations, and nuclear sites. So an important topic coming up for us. So thank you for being with us.
Thank you. I actually am not Blake King. I'm Patrice Withia. I'm joined with Blake King today.
Okay. We're flexible.
No, no problem. We are, we are too. Thank you so much for giving us some time. I'm one of the Public Relations Officers for the Department of Transportation, and I have been so fortunate to be assigned to work with the Division of Motor Vehicles. In the interest of time, I won't keep you all too terribly long. As you mentioned, Chairman, it is imperative for travel, for visiting any military bases, federal facilities that might check for identification, and as he indicated, nuclear power plants. Following the September 11 terrorist attacks, the federal government passed a law called the Real ID Act that requires every state to issue identification that meets a stricter requirement for issuing any IDs, driver licenses, or learner's permits. The Real ID Act is overseen by the Department of Homeland Security. I can't stress enough that it is a federal law and not the state of North Carolina asking you all to provide any additional documentation. The increase in security comes from the second step of reaffirming and verifying the identity and the residency of every single card holder. It also includes several security features in the new card that also strengthens the security. Beginning October 1 of 2020, if you don't have what is now called a Real ID, you will have to provide additional documentation anytime you fly or visit any federal facility. You'll know you have a Real ID if it has a star in the upper right-hand corner of your driver license or identification card. We just started issuing these in May of 2017. We have now issued over 400,000 Real IDs across the state. Here in Asheville, it is consistently in our top 15 offices of the 114 offices in the state of North Carolina for issuing Real IDs. But we need about 4 million people to go back to the driver license office and get a Real ID, because we expect 4 million people in North Carolina will be affected by these new identification requirements. Real ID is available again for any driver license, learner permit, or identification card. The key takeaway, if you want to continue to travel and just use your license for flying or getting on a military base, you're going to need to get this star added to your license. Without it, you will start, you will be required to provide additional documentation every time you visit. Again, the security pieces, all licenses are now issued from one location. You will no longer get it in the office's same day anymore. That's one of those many security features that Real ID provides. The card, as you know, was redesigned from the blue card to now what we, I think, have called the pink card. And every state has a similar design, colors are different, but they have 14 security features that make these cards less likely to be duplicated and used in any fraudulent manners. Every single DMV employee that might ever touch your driving record, whether it's an examiner or the staff that works in the backend that verifies your identification, they all had to be background checked, and they all had to have their fingerprints taken to make sure that they are allowed to touch your personal identification. So this new card again is a heightened security measure for everyone. So if you don't get a star and you visit the driver license office, or if you have visited the office since we started issuing in May of 2017, you probably received a card that says, not for federal identification if you didn't bring in the appropriate documents. And I'll run through those very quickly in just a couple slides. If you renewed your license online or ordered a duplicate license online, you probably received a card that said, not for federal identification, because you did not visit the driver license office to bring your documents for a Real ID. Again, you're going to have to plan ahead if you don't have the star on your license, and if you don't have a passport. The majority of North Carolinians don't have passports, so they are going to again be affected by this new law. You'll need to call TSA every time you get ready to fly to make sure you have the right documents. If you have to go to a military base for any reason, you'll need to contact them before you visit. And there is no standard list of additional documentation that they accept. So Real ID, a lot like Visa, is accepted everywhere. But for anyone without a Real ID, you're going to have to check in in advance every single time you visit, I can't stress that enough, to make sure you have the appropriate documents. Because we'd hate for someone to show up to Disney, to the airport, to go take their family to Disney on October 2, 2020, and parents don't have the right documents to get through TSA, and the whole family's turned away, and you won't be able to fly. So that's part of the reason why we're here today in doing this sort of outreach to let people understand, to help people understand how important this new identification is. It's not very different from what the DMV has always required. The only real difference is a second proof of your address. The DMV has always asked that you prove your identity and your date of birth. They've always asked that you prove that you're allowed to be in the United States, that you have a social security number, and that you live in North Carolina. But now we need to see that second proof. And there are some specific documents that the federal government will allow. You need to bring in one document, again, that identifies who you are and when you were born, and that you're allowed to be in the United States, a certified birth certificate or a passport. If you were from a state that is already issuing Real ID and you have a Real ID, say from Ohio, you can use that to help establish your identity. And if you weren't born here, you still are eligible to get a Real ID. You just need to bring in one of these documents. Certified documents are very important for your birth certificate. It has to be the one with the raised seal. It cannot be the hospital version that you got as a memento with your footprint on it that will not be accepted in the driver license office. And if your name has changed, you bring in your birth certificate and your name is no longer the same, if you've been married or anything else, or adopted and your name was changed, you need to bring some documents that verify that name change. Again, getting a Real ID is a lot like getting a license for the very first time, because you have to establish again who you are and where you live. So ladies, will need to find those certified marriage certificates or order new ones, okay? Prove your social security number, your social security card, or one of these three documents that has your full name and full social. We just finished filing taxes, so your W-2 would suffice, or a 1099 if you are retired. Any two documents with your current address, that could be your North Carolina license if your address is up to date there, your vehicle registration card, a utility bill or a cable bill. Military orders will suffice for this, but you just need two documents that verify your current North Carolina address. Minors that might be traveling alone, they're going to visit grandparents, they're not accompanied by an adult, and they are going to fly in the airport, they will need to furnish a Real ID or additional documentation if they don't have a passport. We recognize that they don't, they don't have a lot of mail. They don't have bills. And for those that are getting their license for the first time, they might not have a license or ID card already. So we came up with a list of documents that would take care of the residency piece of Real ID. Any correspondence from the scouts would work, or if they're on any athletic teams, you can bring that in as long as it has their name and their address. School records, their report card would work. Magazine subscriptions, if you filed your taxes and you claimed them as a dependent and you listed their name, your tax return could assist with that. Hunting and fishing license will work for minors, it will not work for you. They can use theirs. You should have more documents to establish your residence. But we recognize this might be one additional piece that would help any minors. It's also a great way to establish their identity early to prevent any identity fraud for them later on. So one of the things we wanted to do to try to make getting a Real ID a little bit easier is allow you to make an appointment at your local driver license office, or if you're on the eastern part of the state, for the summer at the beach, you can make an appointment from the NAGS head office. But any driver license office, you can call DMV call center to make an appointment. If you ever see one of our mobile offices out at the Mountain State Fair, or at the State Fair in Raleigh, or any other festival or an event, you're more than welcome to take your documents with you and be serviced there. The costs are no different. Real ID is not anything extra when you get your license. If you are renewing your license, it's the same cost. If you're not ready to renew, but you want to get ahead of those 4 million people that are going to go into the DMV in the next two years, it will cost you $13, which is the same cost as a duplicate, just to have the card reprinted and mailed to you. Again, cards are issued from one place now. You will get it in the mail. You will not get it same day, so you need to allow 15 to 20 days to receive it by mail. So this is why we're here, to ask that you check the expiration dates on your licenses or identification cards. If you have children going into driver's ed, let them go ahead and take their documents with them when they get their learner permit, and get ahead of the game. Really quickly, we do have some brochures to leave here that have the documents included. If you go to ncrilid.gov, all the information is also listed there. You cannot get a Real ID online until you get your first Real ID in the office. After that, you can renew online, you can order duplicates online, and that star will stick with your license or identification card indefinitely. Any questions?
I don't think there's any questions right now. That's a lot of great information on the process and what different types of places you would need it for. So thank you very much for the update. We really appreciate you being here.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. The next item on our agenda is a proclamation of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and Amy Purdy with the Mountain Child Advocacy Center will accept the proclamation, and Commissioner Joe Belcher will present it. Is the information I have.
That's not Amy.
Again, we're flexible, so thank you for being with us.
So several commissioners, including myself, have had the opportunity to participate each year in the placing of the pinwheels out by the energy loop, and it's such a wonderful time. We have different groups of children that come through, but the greatest thing about, well, the consistency of all those children, one is their innocence, and that's what the pinwheel shows. And just for the record, how many of you as a kid stuck a pinwheel out the window? Anybody in here? Yeah, yeah. Some of y'all are. Surely, I'm going to ask that question again. How many of you stuck a pinwheel out the window? There we go. There we got them. There we are. All right. So the County of Buncombe proclamation for child abuse. So the County of Buncombe Proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas the problem of child abuse and neglect affects many of Buncombe County's children and has reached epidemic proportions in North Carolina, with over 160,000 children reported abused, neglected, or dependent last year. Whereas last year, the Buncombe County Department of Health and Human Services had over 4,140 children reported abused, neglected, or dependent. Whereas preventing child abuse and neglect is a responsibility of all citizens, and every child has a right to a safe, healthy nurturing environment. And whereas community action is needed to help prevent child abuse so all children have the opportunity to reach their potential. Whereas it is vital that we join forces with the Child Protection Team of Buncombe County and Mountain Child Advocacy Center, Inc., to reach out to parents and children to prevent child sexual abuse and neglect and to strengthen families and children who have experienced abuse. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncombe as follows, that the month of April 2018 be proclaimed Child Abuse Prevention Month in Buncombe County, that this board does hereby call upon every citizen to join the child protection organizations, groups, and individuals in observance of the month with appropriate programs and activities, and that this proclamation be effective upon its adoption, adopted this the 17th day of April 2018 by the Board of Commissioners, County of Buncombe, signed by Brownie Newman, Chairman.
Thank you all. I'll just say a few words, and no, I'm not Amy Purdy, but she's, I'm the B-team, I guess, for tonight, so I appreciate the opportunity. And I wanted to thank all the commissioners that were able to make it out the other day. I know it's the middle of the business day, but those of you who are able to come out for the pinwheel with all the kids, they really enjoyed that. And to acknowledge all the folks that can't be up here with me right now, there's some in the audience, but they let me come up here by myself, that's okay. But all the folks from law enforcement, from DHHS, from the school system, all the folks in the community that deal with this issue 365 days of the year, because unfortunately it is. If you look at our numbers, Commissioner Belcher said it's about 4,100 or so, that comes out to about 14 calls a day, every day of the year. But you also have to remember that those are the calls that come into DSS, and they are not the single portal for all abuse and neglect cases in the county. Actually, about nationally, they average probably 25 to 30% of other calls that are not caretaker or child-on-child cases, or other cases that don't fall into DSS. So you could really look at a number in this county around 5,500 per year. And we have some incredible folks doing great work. I really appreciate the opportunity to work with both the nonprofit folks and our public folks who are on the front lines every day dealing with this. If I could say or advocate for anything, it would be to continue to support the work of folks at DHHS and law enforcement. We just don't have enough folks to deal with this day in and day out. As Commissioner Beach Farrar and I were just in a meeting earlier today, talking about the need is much greater than the resources that we have to match it. So I appreciate your ongoing support and continue to look at our ability to support even more services. We have some really exciting prevention work going on right now, because the reality is my job is to put myself out of a job, and that's the one thing, if I can be successful as a professional, is to do that. So I thank you again. I'm going to be brief, because as it's Child Abuse Prevention Month, in about 45 minutes, I got to throw the first pitch out at the tourist game, and my fastball isn't as good as it used to be, so I got to go practice. So I appreciate the opportunity again. Any questions you ever have, please feel free to contact us or talk with us or come see what we do. I really loved the opportunity to show off the incredible staff I have and the work we do. So thank you again.
Thank you. All right. Our next agenda item is the Community Child Protection Child Fatality Prevention Team Report, and Dr. Jennifer Mullen Dor will make this presentation. Hi.
Hi. So thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. I'll be covering some key points from the 2017 annual report for the, to the board that I submitted as Chair of the Buncombe County Community Child Protection Team and Child Fatality Prevention Team. So first, just wanted to lay some groundwork for you guys. The North Carolina Child Fatality Prevention System was established to assess the records of all deaths of children in North Carolina from birth to age 18, as well as selected cases in which children are being served by Child Protective Services. And the purposes of the system are to enable the development of a community-wide approach to child abuse and neglect, to understand the causes of child fatality in the state, to identify gaps and/or deficiencies in service delivery by public agencies who are designed to prevent abuse, neglect, and child death, and to make and implement recommendations for laws, rules, or policies to prevent future child abuse, neglect, or death. And some examples of some recommendations that came out of the system include things like car seats for infants and child safety restraints in cars, things that, for me, I thought were always there, right? But were developed out of fatality reviews. And so in every county in North Carolina has two teams that are part of the system. The first is the Community Child Protection Team, and this team reviews selected active cases of children who are being served by Child Protective Services. This team also reviews cases in which children died as a result of suspected or confirmed abuse or neglect, if that child had a report of abuse or neglect of the child or their family within the prior 12 months before their death, or if the family or the child was receiving Child Protective Services during the 12 months prior to their death. In 2017, our team reviewed four cases of child maltreatment, and I would say that a common thread among all those cases was the need for improved access to mental health and substance use disorder treatment in our community for children as well as their caregivers, especially for those without insurance. But we also noticed that even for people who have private insurance, there's sometimes a big barrier in terms of where their insurance is accepted. So it's a problem regardless, really, of your insurance status. The second team that every county has to have is a Child Fatality Prevention Team, and this team reviews the records of all other child fatalities, basically the deaths of all children who die from a cause other than suspected abuse or neglect. And it's important to note that our fatality reviews are reviewed the calendar year following the child's death, right? So currently, in this 2018 year, we're reviewing 2017 deaths. It takes us that long to get documentation from the state, medical examiners, reports, things like that. And I'm going to share some data from these fatality reviews in a couple of slides. And in most counties, including our county, these two local teams are actually combined into one team. And the membership of the Community Child Protection Team and the Child Fatality Prevention Team are designated by statute, and they consist of various professionals from public and private agencies that provide services to children and families. And in the annual report that I submitted, Appendix 1 has a list of all the mandated members and who is filling those roles. And the Board of Commissioners is the appointing authority for some of those team members, several of the mandated positions. And the Board can also appoint as many as five additional members to represent agencies or the community at large. And so tonight, the slide shows the several new team members that we would like, we are requesting the Board to appoint to the team. Some of these, so the mandated members are from local law enforcement, and there's been some turnover in some positions, so these are the current members who've been able to attend our meetings. And then additionally, based on the trends that we're seeing related to infant deaths, related to unsafe sleep and the opioid-affected infants, we would like to have the supervisor of the Care Coordination for Children out of Community Care Western North Carolina join our team, as well as Tammy Cody, who's a clinical social worker at Mission Hospital, who's very much involved in the perinatal substance exposure group. So the, I would also ask that the Board and anybody who's here and listening, there is one slot that we have never been able to fill, and that is the position of a child or a parent who'd lost a child prior to their 18th birthday. It's a difficult role for someone to play, but if anyone has a connection to somebody who might be willing to join our team, we would greatly appreciate that information. And then, I'm going to just show some of the data, this may be hard to see, but last year, we started using an electronic tracking tool to be able to look at, to record the causes of death, as well as some factors that may have contributed to that death of the child. And so last year, our team reviewed 27 deaths of children who resided in Buncombe County at the time of their deaths in 2016. We also had two state-led intensive reviews of the deaths of two children who died that year and whose families have been involved with DSS during the 12 months prior to their deaths. So this shows all the causes of death, and as you can see, illness and prematurity are the most common causes of death, but there's a wide range, including motor vehicle, pedestrian versus motor vehicle, we had a bad year in 2016 for that. And I'm going to delve a little further into the infant deaths in another slide. By age, you can see that most of the fatalities we review, actually, half of the fatalities we reviewed were infants, less than one year of age. And we, at Health and Human Services, we've been working over the last couple of years on infant mortality, we've worked on safe sleep, also preconception health. I think all those things are contributing to that number, because as we see, again, prematurity is the most common, was the most common cause of the infant mortality cases that we saw in 2016. But as you'll also see, for, so SUID stands for sudden unexplained infant death. So that's where things like SIDS fall, sudden infant death syndrome fall, that's also where things like accidental suffocation and strangulation in bed fall, and then there's also this undetermined, unknown cause that sits under there. For the four infants who died from sudden unexplained infant deaths, all four of them were in unsafe sleep environments, meaning perhaps they were sleeping on a couch, or they were sleeping in bed with a parent or a sibling, or they had stuffed animals or blankets in their crib with them, things that we know increase the risk of a child dying. And so, again, as I said, the count, we've been working on this at HHS for a while. Based on this, what we've been seeing during our fatality reviews, we've reconvened our work group around safe sleep and are incorporating more community partners and looking at, we recently did a literature review and looked at what is the current literature say, what's best practice, what are messages that may work. The messages are out there, it's just they're not resonating with the people who we need them to resonate with, or there's something, they're not leading to behavior change, right? So often, we're hearing parents say, well, I know where I'm supposed to put my kid, but I made a choice to put him in bed with me, you know, because my other children, I did it with my other kids and they all lived. It's that, it's the hardest part of public health and prevention, really, is making a behavior change established. So now that we're working on this, we thank you for your support. We definitely want to thank Commissioner Beach Farrar, who is a member of our team. We appreciate her time. And if you have any questions, I'm willing to answer, so.
Great. Any questions? All right. I don't think there's any at this time, but we really appreciate you being with us and giving us the update. It's great information.
And are we, in terms of appointing those members, is that something, I don't know how.
It's on the agenda. Can we do that this evening?
I think because the recommendation in statute comes from the Child Protection Team, you'd be fine to do that unless Kathy has a different perspective.
All right.
So I'll move the appointment of the recommended.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thanks for the reminder on that. All right. Our next report is on the Family Justice Center, and we have Julie Clip Nicholson with us to lead us off on this item.
I don't have any minutes in this conversation. I just want to say, I don't have any minutes, I know, in this conversation, but I do want to, I was wondering if I could have some time to express the concerns on my community.
We will, yes, you will. We'll have public comment later.
Later, that's a point.
When we're, it's on the agenda, it's at the, it's the last item on the agenda, is public comment. So, I don't know. You need to, we're going to do this now, okay?
Probably in about 20 to 30 minutes from now, I would project, based on.
Probably about 20 minutes.
Probably about 20 minutes from now.
Yeah.
We'll see. I hope.
Potentially.
Potentially. We don't know, it just depends on how long it takes to get to the other items.
Fingers crossed.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to address you all this evening. In addition to Child Abuse Prevention Month, April is also Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And so, we thought we'd take this opportunity to share with you about the services for victims of sexual assault that are offered at the Family Justice Center, as well as some of the work that your community is doing to address sexual assault and harassment in our community. With the Me Too movement, as well as your investment in the Family Justice Center, we've seen a sea change in the experience of victims of sexual assault who are coming forward and seeking services and support in our community. Since the Family Justice Center opened our doors in July of 2016, we've seen over 700 people walk through those doors for the first time to access integrated intake services, to get connected to multiple different service providers. This year, we've seen a 40% year-over-year increase in the number of people that are walking through those doors to connect with intake services and our service providers. Consistently about 12% of those folks identify sexual assault as the primary reason that they are coming to get connected, to seek support and safety. In our most recent quarter, 67% of people who access those integrated intake services connected with more than one service provider while in their first visit at the Family Justice Center. I think that statistic really highlights the efficiency of having all of those partners co-located. Our Voice, which is our community's sexual assault response organization, serves survivors at the Family Justice Center, and in 2017, they served 564 unduplicated people at the Family Justice Center, offering them counseling, case management, group therapy, art therapy, supportive services to heal from that trauma. Over the last several months with the Me Too movement, we've seen an increase in the number of sexual assaults that have been reported to law enforcement in our community. In the first three months of 2018, we saw a 44% increase in the number of sexual assault incident reports reported to law enforcement over that time in 2017. So when somebody comes to the Family Justice Center after a sexual assault, they can access a range of services. Through our partnership with Mission Health, they can access forensic medical exams, sexual assault exams, at the Family Justice Center. Mission Health's investment has meant that any services that are provided at their outpatient clinic at the Family Justice Center are provided to survivors for free. A couple of important things for the community to know about sexual assault medical exams is that there's the option of doing what we call an anonymous kit. If someone has been sexually assaulted and chooses not to in that moment seek criminal remedies, seek the criminal justice process, they can come and get a kit done, get that evidence collected, so that the option to seek criminal remedies remains open, should they choose to do that in the future. While at the Family Justice Center, they can also talk with law enforcement if they choose to, and get connected with an advocate from Our Voice. I'm excited to have Angelica Wind with Our Voice here tonight to talk about the community outreach that their organization is doing to prevent sexual assault and harassment in the community.
Thank you. Thank you, Julie. Thank you so much for having me here. It is a pleasure and honor to be here before you to talk a little bit about Our Voice and our services that relates to sexual violence and how we can prevent it. Julie said a little bit about the stats in regards to how many survivors of sexual violence that the Family Justice Center has served, or Our Voice has served through the Family Justice Center. But I just want to go really quickly on a couple of stats. We know that one in three women will be impacted by sexual violence sometime during their lifetime. We know that one in six men will be impacted by sexual violence sometime in their lifetime. What we also know is that communities that are marginalized and vulnerable, such as the Black and African-American community, the LGBTQI community, the undocumented community, the immigrant community, that they are more vulnerable to sexual violence. the immigrant community, that they are more vulnerable at, to sexual violence, and yet less likely to access services, including our Family Justice Center. And so, it is my hope, as we move forward in the conversations that we have around sexual violence and what is currently happening in our community around immigration enforcement, that we keep light of the fact of how do we create a community that allows for all individuals that are impacted by sexual violence to be able to come and report, be able to come and access services around that. But until we get to that level, one of the conversations that I am so pleased to be here is to have a conversation in regards to how do we keep sexual violence from happening to begin with? Our Voice's services are fantastic, and I really appreciate your support, because we have only been able to serve more survivors as a result of your support. But nonetheless, our services are only the Band-Aid. What we want is to keep individuals from getting cut to begin with. We want sexual violence not to happen to begin with. And what that means is that Our Voice has focused, in the last 20, 25 years, on prevention education. We want to shift the social norms and attitudes that contribute to sexual violence. So, very much like Jeff Sedoli from Mountain Child Advocacy Center, we want to run ourselves out of a job. And so, the way that we do this is through the creation and implementation of several different prevention education curricula, some that we work with the schools. But I'm here, actually, to talk to you about two innovative programs that this community has supported, two programs that are known, well, one is known nationally and one we're about to launch nationally as well. Our first program is the Bar Outreach Program. So, the Bar Outreach Program is a program that we created in 2008 as a response to increased reports in drug facilitated sexual assaults, commonly known as DFSA. So, there's an idea that DFSA is that person who's slipping a roofie or GHB in your drink, and it can look like that. But in actuality, the number one drug that is related to drug facilitated sexual assault is alcohol. And as you know, our, our community, Asheville, is known as Beer City, USA, and we pride ourselves with the breweries that we have welcomed into our community and have thrived in our community. Having said that, what we've also seen is an increase in DFSA reports. So, what, how the Bar Outreach Program works is that we connect with local bars or any other establishment that sells alcohol to train their staff on bystander intervention strategies that allow for the bar staff to be able to assess situations and intervene in situations where drug facilitated sexual assault may occur. It also trains them to be able to keep an eye of, okay, if you see a drink that has been left behind or unattended, pick it up, throw it away, right? How it is that they can employ very simple, but yet very meaningful, strategies on minimizing drug facilitated sexual assault. It also includes reaching out into the community, educating them that this is a real thing and it's happening in our community. One of the things that we are particularly proud of is that the Bar Outreach Project, we have been able to work with the Department of Health and Human Services, the health inspectors. When we talk about prevention education, yes, Our Voice does lead in the state and the nation with regards to prevention programming, but it isn't just our sole responsibility. So, we're able to partner with local partners in how they can engage to support prevention education, and one of them is through our collaboration with the Health and Human Services, health inspectors. And so, we have worked to train the health inspectors with regards to drug facilitated sexual assault and how they can engage in that conversation. So, when they're conducting the health inspections in the restaurants, anywhere the food is served, they can speak with the owners and staff and say, around drug facilitated sexual assault, and how they can engage in prevention programming as well. And so, we're really excited, because this is a unique collaboration in the nation, and Buncombe County has been uplifted as leading the work around this, and there are a lot of other communities across the state that are looking to see how they can partner with their local Health and Human Services around this. The other project that we have is the 86th Curriculum, which we will be launching relatively soon, which deals with sexual harassment in the restaurant business. Some of y'all may know, but when we talk about sexual harassment, there was a national survey that was conducted, and the restaurant business is where the individuals have indicated that the highest rates of sexual harassment has occurred. So, we created an 86th Curriculum that seeks to work with management on creating stronger anti-sexual harassment policies, but also trains them on how to respond to disclosures. In addition, we work with the restaurant staff with regards to how they can engage in bystander intervention strategies as well. So, we invite you to be a part of these conversations and be on the lookout in the next couple of weeks as we launch this locally and nationally. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. In addition to the great work that is happening at Our Voice, the business community is getting involved in this conversation and working together to build a community that's free from sexual assault and harassment. The Chamber of Commerce is hosting a Woman Up event on May 7th, and if folks are interested in learning more about how their business can partner to create an environment that's free of sexual harassment, attending this seminar is a great opportunity. There will be legal advice, HR experts, as well as victim advocates. It's a really great example of that public-private partnership to prevent sexual harassment. In addition, and as part of the great prevention work that Our Voice is doing, I just want to take a moment to highlight our community's prevention plan. This is a plan that has been led by HelpMate, Our Voice, and Mountain Child Advocacy Center. And the collaboration really grew out of the collaboration that has occurred within the Family Justice Center. They identified that there are shared risk and protective factors for domestic violence, sexual assault, and child abuse. And that as we, if we, as a community, work together to address the risk factors and to build the preventive factors, then we truly can build a community free of violence. A broad range of partners has come together to develop this plan that addresses prevention within our faith communities, within our schools, within our workplaces. We believe that it's the first in the state plan to address all three forms of violence in a coordinated way. We've applied for funding support for the Women for Women of the Community Foundation of the, of Western North Carolina, and are hoping that we are funded to be able to implement this plan in our community. In addition, for Still Standing, for Sexual Assault Awareness Month, our Still Standing Project has highlighted the stories of survivors of sexual assault. This project, which I hope you've seen out in the community, was led by the creative talents of Cataldo Perron with Buncombe County PR, as well as the work of community partners and many survivors who have stood up to share their stories of courage and hope. We've had an incredible response from businesses and organizations in our community, and really believe that businesses hosting these life-size silhouettes are standing up to, against domestic and sexual violence. I'd encourage you to take some time to read the stories and explore at buncom county.org/stillstanding. Now, welcome any questions.
I want to thank you, and for everyone listening, that everyone is welcome to the Family Justice Center, and no one should ever feel that they don't have a place to go, and I think that's extraordinary. And I think the more we can circulate that message so that everyone knows they can go there is, is great. And the restaurant work, for too long, too, too long, people have, you know, whether it's a question of getting more shifts to work, more tips, they have suffered against this harassment, and thank you for taking such a bold step.
Thank you.
Just chiming in again to say thank you to you and the entire team at FJC and all the county departments and the sheriff's office and local partners who are represented there. It's really remarkable, remarkable work and impacts so many lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your support.
All right. Thank you, Julie. All right. The next item on our agenda is the ambulance franchise update, and Michael Frue, I think will start this presentation and then go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I was just asked to remind the board and the public that we have Mr. Maria Perez as an interpreter here this evening. This matter concerns the medic application for franchise for emergency response services in the county. Mr. Tully is here with some other representatives of medic, came before the board to consider that request in November, and through discussions with this board and county manager, this board approved the hiring and retention of an independent third party to review the need for additional ambulance services and essentially to review the current emergency response system for Buncombe County, and to see how this might best fit. So, the county did retain the services of Management Solutions for Emergency Services, and Mr. Keith Bost is here today, and he will explain what he found out in his report and what his recommendations are. Mr. Bost?
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
First, I'd like to thank you for allowing my company to do the study. We enjoy doing any study like this, 'cause we, we'd like to provide knowledge and education. So, if, do it two ways. I can give you a brief overview and then open up for questions, or you can go with questions. It's either way.
Why don't you, why don't you give us a, give us your presentation, and we'll follow up with questions.
Okay. Well, we was contacted by county staff to look at your EMS system.
You didn't hear back here at all. Oh, I'm sorry, you have to bend over.
We were contacted by county staff to look at your EMS system, to see if it was adequate, if it was lacking, and to look at an outside agency, because they have filed for permission to do franchising with the county. We, when, in those conversations, we, to save you money, believe it or not, we felt the first step was to see if you're adequate in your service. And we all agree that that's the path we'd go down. So, in that process, we gathered multiple parts of data. We gathered raw data on your response times, we gathered billing information, we gathered financial reports from the fire departments, and the data analyst for us provided the numbers. If you look at the report and you go through it, the three things that we wanted to do with that data was to see if you're meeting a standard. The standard we used was NFPA 1710. It's really targeted to fire protection, fire departments that have ambulance systems or services to use as a standard, 'cause EMS usually doesn't have standards like NFPA. So, we used that standard to look at response times, and after we took the data and then pulled the information from it that we needed, you actually come close to meeting NFPA 1710, which is really good. A lot of fire departments across the country don't even meet it. We also looked at your data when it was related to your response times, when it come to how fast your people are getting out of the building. We recognized that the standard shows that your people need to be out of the building less than a minute. We did see in our study that the fire service side of it, the fire department side of it, they're actually coming close to meeting that standard of less than a minute. The EMS side probably can improve a little bit. Most of those were getting out of the fire, the stations in less than two minutes. So, we noticed some possible improvement there. We looked at two counties of like kind, tried to find like kind. Union County is a little less, smaller than y'all. In that part of it, they provided 14 ambulances during peak hours, which is usually during the day, and 11 at night. They reduced their ambulances at night. When we look at a county larger than yours, which is Durham County, they provide 19 ambulances during the day, and they also reduced their staffing of ambulances to 10 in the evening in the non-peak hours. What we recognize with yours is you provide 19 ambulances during peak, peak times, and actually 17 at night, which is way more than a county of 50,000 more population with a lot more density. So, your response times, you're almost meeting NFPA 1710. On staffing of ambulances, you actually provide more than counties of average. Your, let's see. So, we used that data, and then we looked at, once we recognized that proficiency-wise, you're meeting or coming close to meeting NFPA 1710, with a little more improvement of maybe management when it comes to getting out of the stations faster, you possibly could meet NFPA 1710. So, with that and your like kind of having more resources than like kind, we felt like you were proficient in the services that you're providing. Now, one of the questions that was asked us is if we allowed another entity, outside or internal, to basically start providing services, how would that affect us? Well, it's gonna affect you financially. It's like any service that you provide, there's a cost related to it. So, we pulled data from billing agencies, the fire departments, the rescue squad, and the county's billing agency, to see actually how much federal funding, how much contract funding, and how much billing that the county actually brought in. And if you look in the report, it's actually right at $17 million. Well, that's the, that's what the charges were, the net charges were 17 million. But you, when you talk Medicaid, Medicare, and other billing, you have to look at what you actually bring in. And your payments were 11 million, 11.3 million. So, once we recognize your numbers, then we look at it and say, okay, out of that, there was 39,614 trips. Trips equal to billable transport is what we're looking at. So, what you have now is billing for 39,614 trips. If you allow an outside organization, or even another organization, to start responding to medical calls, you're gonna reduce that number of billable trips that the county's actually receiving financial, federal funding. So, even if the outside, 'cause one of the things was said was, one of the outside agencies wants to provide the service for free. When we look at services, it's hard to say free, because free usually doesn't exist. But let's say that you have an outside organization or an inside organization that wants to start providing the service totally for free. And definition of free is free to the county where you don't subsidize it, and, and they don't bill for Medicaid and Medicare, and they don't bill the patient. Does that make sense? So, if they provide it 100% free, it's still gonna remove federal dollars from your system. Does that make sense? So, you're gonna see, if anybody is brought into the system right now, which we feel is very adequate, it's going to hurt you financially with removing federal funding from the system. So, the biggest thing we found is you're adequate. You're almost meeting NFPA 1710, which is a huge standard for the fire service and EMS transport. And then, next thing is you have good times that you probably can improve on. Certain areas, and we listed it down to area codes, the reason we look at area codes versus district, in most cases, if you don't have an ABL, which is a system, we systematically can recognize where that ambulance is sitting, you have that system. So, if Fairview or Skyland's dispatched, they could be dispatched out of their district. It's, it's actually dispatching the closest ambulance versus a fire district. With that system in place, we decided to actually give you more areas that we could break that data down, so we broke it down into zip codes. We didn't go any closer than zip codes, because if you actually, if I produce a report that shows any more than a zip code, then it can actually be reverse engineered and possibly have some HIP issues contained to, so I can figure out where that call was actually dispatched to. So, we give you zip codes for that, that situation. If you look at the zip codes that are not meeting the NFPA 1710, you'll recognize that those districts have a very small population. That tells us in the report and the data side of it is that area is too small to concentrate an EMS ambulance in it, to dedicate it. One of them is less than 200 calls a year. That means that you're generating less than one call a day. It would be... That tells us in the report and the data side of it is that area is too small to concentrate an EMS ambulance in it, to dedicate it. One of them is less than two hundred calls a year. That means that you're generating less than one call a day. It would be hard financially to be able to place an ambulance with full staff in an area that's generating less than one call a day. So, we've looked and give you all that data to where you can focus your attention management wise. Improve your system even more, which I think very adequate right now. Let's see, work on our relationship fleet. You have a healthy fleet that's been replaced all last year. Anything that, that I've actually found out through one of the commissioners that called. Is there's actually more ambulances than we reported. We used, data wise, we gather when we gather, we work extremely hard not to contact fire chiefs, EMS providers, stuff like that. Reason being is every conversation we have, there's always people who wasn't in the conversation that wonders what the conversation was about. So, we work off of email and we also look at, we looked at their budgets. And we obtained releases to contact their billing agencies directly for raw data. To where our people can build, can use that data ourselves. So, in doing so, we recognized your fleet's been totally replaced on the county EMS side. And the way I understand, there's been three more ambulances provided to fire departments and a rescue squad. So, you actually have more resources than what we actually established in this report. Because by the time we gathered our information, they've already been three more purchased or actually paid, placed from the county into, into the internal organizations. So, after you looked at the whole report, it just comes down to it is, is you're proficient right now. You have a lot more resources than, than the norm or of like kind. So, if you want to allow somebody outside or internal to provide a service, it's just. You will see a financial impact. And is the county wanting to supplement with tax funds to keep the service better? Or is the county, does the county want to take back the internal organizations? And, and dial them back as you allow an outside organization to start providing service? That's the two questions that we posed to you that, that you have to answer.
So, have you been able to establish what the financial loss would be? That's one question. And then two. Have you looked at typical response times? Because I think, I speak for others in that we want the first ambulance that can get there to get there.
Yes, ma'am. The, the whole seventeen ten is built off of recognizing response time. It's one of the most used factors of seeing how healthcare is actually delivered. So, yes, that's, that's our, the biggest part of our study is to make sure that your response times are where they are, or, or where they need to be. Now, there's areas, when you look at the report, that identify, that doesn't meet that eight-minute response time.
What areas are those?
It would be the two eight seven one five, doesn't meet it. The two eight seven five three doesn't meet it. And the two eight seven zero one doesn't meet it. So, that would be the area codes. But if you look at the next page, on page eight. If we look at those area codes, they got a population per mile of two hundred and forty, with a total trips of two ninety-eight. Two ninety-eight's a trip. If you look at the funding side. I might have passed already. There's about three hundred dollars this collected. So, you, you look at a trip charge of eight hundred dollars, really you're collecting about four hundred, three hundred, four hundred dollars. So, if you figure that two hundred and ninety-eight times four hundred dollars. If you put an ambulance in that location to get all two ninety-eight. That's what you're going to generate with federal funding. Which is not enough to, 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 in my mind, to justify the need.
Let me ask you a question. At this point, you know, I'm concerned too about service as well as finances. But I think the most important by our constituents is they need an ambulance, I want it there. But you compared us to Union and Durham County. I'm familiar with both counties. But one of the things that we're looking at in Buncombe County is we are a retirement community. And we've got a lot of people with gray hair like me, who when we want, need the service, we want it there. But, and when we look ahead, that's what's projected to the future, we even going to get more in like me. So, you know, I don't want to see us worried about a few dollars in hurting the service that we're giving our constituents. Because heck, I might be one of them. But, you know, did you look at that?
Oh, absolutely. And if you read the report, it, it basically says that if, the choice is yours. We showed you the response times are, are meeting a national standard. It's not my opinion, it's the standard. We look at your shoot times on how fast your people's getting out of the door. That's a national standard. We look at, like Durham, I mean, if you look at your, your density, I mean, theirs is, yours is six hundred and sixty square miles of, of area. Theirs is three, two ninety-something. So, there is some difference in density. As a retired fire chief. I'll tell you that I would love to, and this study says it. I would have loved to put a fire truck on every corner. Because I could guarantee then a response. I could guarantee that my people would be on scene in less than three, four minutes. And if I can stop, be within that five to four to five minute range. I can really turn around death coming to cardiac arrest. But I, I do have to look at financially how that will affect me. Now, in our report, we showed you all the elements of that. For you to be able to sit and say, you know, okay, do we want to achieve a better than national standard? Do we want to put ambulances in a more dense area? And do we care about cost? My job was to provide you with the numbers to where you can make that decision. Because in my opinion, I would put a fire truck on every corner. But, do you want three, three million dollar station sitting on every corner? The factor, the funding factor did have to enter, did have to enter our minds.
So, I've got a, just a couple, couple of questions. And one in, in relation to, you know, Commissioner Whiteside's, you know, comments. You, you do say that, you know, should we decide to do this, as far as level of care. That we have key performance standards, we have service agreements, that, that we, we approach it in the proper way. That, then that does become, that does become a, a, a responsible decision. I understand that what you've provided is, is great information and it's, and the more I think we look at it, the more we can, we can glean from it. You know, one of the questions that I, I got, I got three, three questions. One is, the, I would assume from a financial standpoint that the collection rate would, would also be a big player in that, in that equation, you know, because, you know, we're at a seventy percent rate. And two other surrounding counties are, are at, at eighty percent. So, I would assume that's an obvious yes, right? So, there's room to improve that, which would, which would lessen, which would improve the, 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 the revenue within that system.
That's correct. We, but the billing agencies that you actually use, Andrews and a management consulting company. Both of them, we've seen across the state provide a real, a healthy collection rate. Seventy percent's pretty healthy. Now, there are ways that you can improve it and there's, but it's, there again, it's how, how far does the county want to go down that path? There's counties that, and I didn't, one thing we didn't ask, Transylvania County or Henderson County Rescue. Was, does their ordinance allow full hard collection? Because that is a way that you can improve, is if you start leaning and, and stuff like that. But, most counties and government agencies don't go that far.
But it, it would be reasonable to, you know, you know, for us to review that, given we receive the information. Another thing is, did you, did you include in your report, or did you look at historic call volume? In other words, where we've been, where were we at ten years ago compared to now? And, you know, how our call volume has, you know, went up based on, you know, population and so on?
Yes, yes, sir. We actually looked, if you look on page twelve, we went back to five years. We didn't go back, what, what we've seen doing these things across the state of Carolina is anything between about oh eight and oh twelve. With the hardship that this country's seen, population migrated back and forth. So, we've seen that that data between those years isn't going to be a good data. So, we, we went back five years versus ten years.
I think, I think we had that information, I just can't, I just can't pull it up in my computer. So, I, I think we, I think we had that in a, in a report before. And I, and I believe it, I believe it had went up, I believe it had went up quite a bit. And I had another thing, this also is in line with, with Commissioner Whiteside's question regarding comparing our counties to other counties. A couple of these zip codes are in, my, my district, for example, two eight seven one five is Cantler. Two eight eight oh six is, is West Asheville, Bent Creek, some of those areas. Twenty-five percent of the call volume is in some of those areas. But, the, the, it would seem to me that the terrain in Buncombe County would also make a difference in, in response time in that, in that, in that eight-minute. You know, we're not going, like in, in Durham County, we're not going, we're not going three streets over, or we're not going. You know, it's just, it's, it's different. And so, that, that's where a lot of this conversation come from. Not that we're, we're grateful that you've shown us that our existing system is exemplary in a lot of ways. You know, our concern was just making sure that we were dealing with the terrain properly and that we were making sure that, you know, somebody dialed nine-one-one for the grandmother, that, that we were going to get there and get there with as many, you know, ambulances as you could within reason, so.
And that's where we provided the Union County status with six forty and yours is six sixty. It's about fifty thousand population less.
Okay.
Well, actually, it's about forty. We, we wanted to provide you population data. If we would have went down, further down that path, we probably could have provided you with demographic data of showing the, the aging population maybe. But, go ahead.
So, the, so, to me, what you're saying is that the greatest harm, if we did this, would be some financial loss. You're not saying it's going to affect patient care, anything like that, is that right?
Absolutely not. I mean, the, it's just like I, I stated a minute ago when I come to the fire service. If I put a fire truck on every corner, it's only going to improve the service. It's just the financially, are we willing to take the financial to do that? And that's, that's where you are, is you meet the standard, you're adequate now of like kind, even larger populations. It's, it's, it's just, are you, are you willing to supplement a few more? And it could be a million dollars to increase that system.
Do we know how much it would be, or we don't know?
Well, right now with the, with the population, you know, even our data. If you look at the numbers that we provided you on the, the financial side. We listed the trips. So, we listed the entity, the trips, the net charges, and then the payments. And that means money in the bank, that's all we really care about. If you take, and you allow an ambulance, and it would, it'd be even hard for us, that's page fifteen out of twenty-two. If you take an ambulance and you just let them come into the county and start running openly, just freely. It would be hard to, hard to identify what, what financially that would do to you. If you limit them to a district, and we know how many trips was in that zip code. Then we probably could tell you financially how that would affect you. But you can do the same thing with the, the graph on fifteen twenty-two. Is you can look at those trips in Barnville and say you allow an outside agency to completely take it over. Estimated, they're going to do about three hundred and three trips, plus or minus.
Could I, can I make a, just on this point though, I mean. You know, if we raised the tax rates in the districts enough to offset any losses. Then, you know, theoretically, the service levels that are out there to date could be made whole. But unless we're really clear that we're willing to raise the tax rates in the fire districts to make them whole for any diversion of revenue that results from this. Then, then it would, it would hurt the existing services that are out there. Because those, we know these fire districts are already struggling, you know, to, you know, to, to, to do, to, to do the operations that they have. They stretch every dollar. So, if, if they're not made whole, then it, it absolutely would harm the existing services, right? Because they would be in a position where they would either have to, if we don't raise the tax district rates. They would have to cut personnel or cut staffing. I mean, those would be, that would be the reality for the fire districts unless we raise, unless we kind of agree upfront. Whatever revenues diverted, we raise the tax rate by that amount.
Well, we, we already noticed that in the study, that the, the, the Skyland Fire Department, they used to staff two ambulances. And budget wise, they backed it down to one. Because the county added another EMS ambulance into the system that affected them. So, when you, when you put that EMS ambulance into the system, you pulled federal funding from Skyland. So, luckily, the fire chief or whoever done the budgeting decision said, we need to remove our staffing. Because we can't afford to move forward with it without supplementing with tax funding. So, that, it's already happening. And that's, that's where our, our report states is, even if you want to increase your services. You have a lot of resources that are sitting in buildings that's not being staffed. Instead of bringing an outside agency in or adding an internal agency, it may be cheaper. I, I strongly suggest it's probably cheaper to actually staff what you have now. Would be your best financial decision.
I mean, we, we, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
One thing come up, this started back in December, I think, at the meeting. Have you got any numbers on how many nine-one-one calls has went to med? That they was not anyone available to come out?
On, when we looked at the, the numbers provided us out of the CAD system, it come out as EMS and then fire. So, if, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, what I'm saying is how many went to, you know, the Tully, the medics. I had a nine-one-one tell me three hundred and forty-seven calls has been translated to them because they had no ambulance available to go there. You figure that up over time. And the dollar wise, if four hundred and fifty dollars is what they're going to get out of eight hundred. There's already a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars there.
Yes, sir. And, and if you, if we would have dug deeper into the system, we probably could have found why that, why that was. And if it may be that second ambulance that, the first ambulance at Skyland Fire Department may have been on a call already. So, if they would have had that second ambulance staffed, they may not have had to do that.
Well, I don't think this was just the Skyland area. I think this is across the county. And, you know, I guess what I want to say is being an ex-racecar driver. You're in accidents all the time. I, I sure didn't want someone from outside the county coming racetrack me laying there, you know, for a couple of hours when you could have somebody right there available.
Absolutely. And, and that, and that's where our study showed that if, if you want to increase your services, you have resources available to do so now. That, that's only our, our only avenue. Do we have a problem with you bringing an outside agency? Absolutely, absolutely not. That's not our opinion.
We, when we had a meeting, it was a seven-o vote to put them on because we want the closest ambulance to pick us up. I'm like my friend, Mr. Whiteside down there. I'm getting a little age on me. But we don't. There's been dispatch calls, that there's been ambulances sent from Reynolds District. The Tully's ambulance that's right over here, not far from us. That's their base. They, they, they give them downtown Asheville, okay? That's the area where there's no money. But they take it anyway because that's what they want to do. But what you didn't do, if you'd have backed up one year, you'd have figured out, the fire departments didn't even have ambulances. So, once, on September the ninth, be five years, this coming September. They took them off the roll. They've been in business since eighty-nine. They were paramedic group. They handed it to the different fire departments. First thing they do is go out and buy new ambulances. It's the fire people's.
It's the fire people's tax dollars buying the ambulances. That's, should be for the fire tax. Going up a penny on the taxpayers for that, I can't see. Because we have one that you talked about, and I'm the, I'm the person that you talked to.
Nice to meet you.
We went and looked at Buncombe Rescue, county manager and myself. We'll get to the door. There ain't really any there, but all of a sudden the door opens up. We figure out that now they've got four ambulances because Mr. Vehun gave them one. They have one that's blowed up, but they're only from nine to nine. So, you know, the Tully's walked through the door. You haven't met them. They're, they're, they're sitting right there. You didn't go research what they have. You might have looked at it on paper, but you didn't go look at their business. How many ambulances, even our Buncombe County, Ms. Stone and myself went to their place to look to see what they had. Ms. Tully's daughter showed us. They don't only do that. They teach classes. They got dummies just like in hospitals. They show how to bring people back. They lay them on their stretchers. They, they teach these classes. You're talking about cutting the legs out from under the fire departments? They cut them out from under theirs. And then they were happy because when they did it, one day, you sit close, right over here at this Shell station, right across the bridge, medic ambulance, that's where it always sit with somebody in it. They didn't have a leave time to get an ambulance to go. They set an ambulance. Here's their ambulance, and guess what's sitting next to it? Skyland Fire Department. That's when it had taken off. They're on a different radio service. It's one that they have to carry more radios for. The main thing is, I want the closest ambulance to me. If it was somebody else that had been around as long as they had. They've been paramedics since eighty-nine. They've been paramedics over at Buncombe Rescue one year. One year. So there is professionals in the room. And me personally, you know, I understand that you've tried to do a great job for us and I see it. Marshall, it's not us. Lee Sester has a contract with Marshall. Has nothing to do with us. But I do remember a long time ago, I've known the Tully's a long time, Robert does too, because in racing, Kermit raced. The mother and them took care of the racetrack down here. Somebody got hurt, they took them in. But they did it because that's what they want to do. They're doing it now because that's the way, what they want to do. When you're picking up people down in town, Asheville, that's what they give you, on a different radio that are indigent, whatever you call it. That means you're getting no money. How are we cutting somebody else's throat? If, if there's an ambulance out in Reynolds, and there's an ambulance right here, and they have to dispatch Reynolds to Hominy, this ambulance is closer. You want the quickest one to get there. That's about seven minutes, the distance. There's a whole lot of issues here. But the main issue for me, he says he'll do it, you know, for the cost of whatever he picks up, but he wants to be to where they can see him. And they, if, I've talked to him out at Fairview. He said, well, we were at Mission Hospital one day and they sent us to West Asheville. Well, that's fine, because they run the thing. They saw us at Mission and they sent them to West Asheville. That's good. But what they used to do, they used to do, is they'd be here, they could hear what was going on. When Skyland or Fairview did not have a, uh, an ambulance at all. But there is an ambulance at Reynolds, but it belongs to Buncombe County. So if it had to go somewhere and they heard it had to leave, they would put another, take this ambulance downtown and move it closer to Seventy-Fourth so they could work both. That's what we're looking for. Somebody not jumping in. You're looking at numbers. I see you're looking at numbers. But Skyland, they thought the ambulance deal was going to be great. So does Fairview. It's like I said, we give them tax money four, five years ago, when I first became a commissioner. First thing they did, spent a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars on ambulance. Because we're on an ambulance service because the Tully's been shut down. Well, you're saying we're going to cut the legs out from under them. They got their legs cut out from under them. So what's fair will be fair. These radios that we have, this area that they can spot where his ambulances are, if it's the closest ambulance, I want it. If it's Fairview, I want it. If it's Riceville, I want it. But that's, you know, that's what we need. There's questions that could be asked of these people, all of them sitting here. It's a family. You know, what is this done? They have a contract with VA, but they're still down here doing what they do and doing other things. They work the fire grounds, they work other stuff. They have almost as many ambulances as we have in the county. And they bought them and they pay tax on them. They're not a nonprofit. We get money off their buildings. So if you think I'm going to cut them down, you're wrong.
So I just have two questions, sorry. Um, so in your professional opinion, two questions. Is this going to cause irreparable financial harm to the fire districts? That's number one. And two, if we don't do this, in your estimation, is someone's life going to be in jeopardy if we don't add this? And I know there, one, the second one is a hypothetical, but you're an expert in this.
First one is financial. Um, I think you will see a financial hardship on fire departments if you don't force them to scale back services. Uh, and that's what you have to, it, if you cut the legs out of him, he's probably had to scale back, scale back services too, to survive. If you do the same to the fire service, you'll have to supplement it to keep the service where it is now. If they want to bring five ambulances, four ambulances into the system and pick up calls, you'll see millions that you're going to have to supplement to allow that to happen without, without disturbing how the fire department's run now. Now, can I, so that's, that's the first question you ask. The second question, um, it's so hypothetical that it's hard for an old fire chief to answer that. What, I, I again would love to have a fire department with an ambulance sitting on every corner. There's some good stuff out there in the, in the emergency service field that are starting to really work towards, uh, the clinical death side of CPR and stuff like that, that I wish we had unlimited amount of funds. Uh, then I could stop a lot of it. So your question is, is somebody going to put, be put at jeopardy if you don't start that? I don't want to answer it.
Are, are, are any of our response times alarming as they exist now?
If, if you look at some of the rural areas, um, like the two eight seven zero one, uh, in two thousand seventeen, it's fifteen, sixteen minutes. There's a few seventeen minutes. Uh, those to me should be looked at. If it means shifting ambulances into those areas. But I'd always have to look back too and say, you know, are you receiving three hundred calls or two hundred calls in that area? Uh, and financially, what would that do? You know, you have to look at what do you want and look at how financially you get there. Uh, that's what our report does for you, is it provides you with a lot of data to where you can make that decision very soundly.
So if we added this, do you see those response times being cut down?
It depends on if you require them to stay in an area. If you say, you know, we have four locations that really need to be focused on right now, and I think we actually listed out those, those area codes for you, uh, to get you under the NFPA standard. If you say, we're willing to let you come in, but you're going to focus on these areas, um, then yeah. I, I, there ain't no doubt that you'll see a better response time. But if you've got, again, if you've got an area that is running two hundred calls a year or trips that's, that's billable, for even a nonprofit, is it financially stable enough that you can enter that market, uh, to provide that call? So it's, it's always that. Is, is, yes, if you put more resources in that zip code, you will see a decrease. I firmly believe that.
Right.
But it's going to be a financial decision you have to make. And, uh, the decision you'd have to make is, do you have resources available right now that you can staff? Because you have a lot of ambulances, like the, the rescue squad, I want to talk to Mr. Frye, is that right? Okay. Mr. Frye, um, with the rescue squad having four ambulances and only staffing one from nine to nine, that means there's three available ambulances that you own that can be staffed. Well, I, I did understand you say something a minute ago, Mr. Frye, you said, I would, it doesn't matter if it's a for-profit or nonprofit or cutting the legs out of a nonprofit versus a for-profit. The only thing that, that I want you to understand on that statement is this. If Skyland Fire Department goes out of business, chances are their resources will be distributed inside your county to other agencies. That's how nonprofits work, is nobody owns the assets. The assets are owned by the corporate members of that district. And if they vote to go to dissolve, their assets usually, if you have, in a good case, uh, are distributed inside your county. If you have a for-profit business and it goes out of business, those assets are liquidated to make what you can make, to go in either your pocket or to pay off bills. So investing in a nonprofit that's contractually based right now with you, at least you know those assets could stay here. If that's, if you know, that, that was the only part that I, I wanted to make sure that you understood.
Well, if, okay. But this for-profit's been here since nineteen eighty-nine. This for-profit used to back Buncombe County up. Okay? That's, they still do, because they hear every day, two ambulances down. Well, that means somebody didn't show up for work.
And, and my mind's spinning as fast as it can go, uh, because there's one thing you probably could do is you could put a contractual agreement in place with them if they do come in, that their resources that's purchased.
All we're saying, all we're saying is bring them in. I'm not saying five ambulances. I'm not even saying two. I'm just saying, if they can get back on and they got an ambulance here, and all of a sudden there's something in Hominy, they can go. And if, if Fairview's sitting there and they're closer, let them go. You know, that way, if they go over close enough to Fairview, then they can cover Fairview for the, Fairview being gone in that area. It's not a putting them in an area. It's putting them to where they're, if they got one ambulance, putting one ambulance out there. The main thing is, nobody can see them. That's what you said. They could see them. They can't even get on, there's a seven hundred channel. They got the eight hundred and they got the seven hundred. The city's got them on the seven hundred, but the county won't let them on it. That's our radio. Now they have to carry a spare radio. We pay for spare tires, tires to be able to dispatch them. So these people have to carry extra radios instead of carrying one. That is the main thing here. We need to get them the radios. We need to get them to where, they, they don't want a district. If they sit down here and do exactly what they've been doing, right over here on Charlotte Street, that's fine. But if they can hear what's going on, then if they're the closest ambulance, they can be sent. If they're not, it's somebody else, period. If they don't get a call, period, it's just the, the option that they have. I'm not, you'd have to ask them if they're going to put any extra ambulances on. I don't, no, not right now. She's just shaking her head. So, you know, she runs a show. But the fact is, is something was taken away. As I said, to cut their legs off. Shut them off one night at eight o'clock at night. I've got the email in my office. I want the closest ambulance to pick me up. And I promise you, if it's them, Fairview, I don't care, Riceville, Asheville, Buncombe County, whoever's the closest. Mr. Presley, I think anybody on this board would say the same thing. And that's just where I'm at. I don't want to hurt any of the ambulance people, but the fact is, they'll make it with the one. But we don't need to put them in ambulance business, okay? Fairview sold their ambulances. Then when we give them money and this deal come about, they bought a new one, and then they bought a second one. Then we give them one the other day. So they want to go in the ambulance business. Well, that's, you know, we got ambulance services. And that's, you know, I don't care if we're giving them away or what. We give one to Barnesville because all he wanted was a spare. He didn't put, he's not putting it in service. He just wanted a spare because his, had a problem with his in that way. But that's how I got these free ambulances going. I did that through, I said, he wanted to buy one. But he didn't want to buy it off the internet. So I got him hooked up. Next thing I know, we gave him one. So blame that on me, but, you know, it's like I said, he's got a spare ambulance out in Barnesville now and they need it. It's a long ways out there.
All right. I think, uh, one to close. I think clo- uh, going back to what Commissioner Frost said about the response time. You know, I think we need to make aware, three hundred and forty-seven calls since December. How much would that have added to the response time had they not switched over and called, you know, the Tully's and said, hey, what have you got available? Have you got any data on that or?
We just looked at the response times. If it, if, if they responded as an EMS agency to a call, we have that data that's included in it.
Within the last ninety days.
Uh, because the raw data we pulled is every EMS dispatched in your county in two thousand seventeen. And the data analyst actually took all the standards, uh, away to make sure that was an emergency service response, emergency response versus convalesce or non-emergency response. So the data's in there.
Hey, I'd like to, I'd like to, I'd like to make a few comments and maybe ask a question. Um, so first I just want to say, I, um, I really appreciate the preparation of the report. Um, and I really appreciate the commission supporting the preparation for the report as part of the consideration of this, this idea. I think this is a very important, uh, very important discussion and decision. Uh, the provisions of, um, emergency response services are undoubtedly one of the most critical public services that, uh, that we are responsible for in partnership with the various partners that we work with. So, um, you know, and, and as, um, as I've, you know, thought about this issue for a number of years after I got elected, uh, to the county commission, heard both sides of it, you know, grew both sides of the issue. And, uh, and it's a pretty complicated issue in a lot, in a lot of ways. Um, and it's not something that I had a lot of expertise on. You know, there's some issues that you come on here and you kind of, you kind of have been involved in for a long time. This one was not, not one of those kind of issues, uh, for me at that time. And, uh, so, and I really wrestled with this because I wasn't sure what the right thing to do was. And, um, you know, I was concerned that maybe in the past, some of these ideas weren't given fair consideration. There's a lot of turf out there, you know, in these kind of arenas. And I didn't want an idea like this to not be considered because of, you know, because of those kind of issues. And, and the same way, I don't want us to, to support it for, um, you know, for those same reasons either. So I, I really, I, I was glad we were going to do this report to get, to get kind of an objective look at, does this strengthen our system of emergency response services in Buncombe County? Does it make it better? Uh, or does it kind of have very little effect? Or, or, you know, does it, does it have the potential to actually weaken the system that we have in place? So, um, I, I learned a lot from this report. And, um, while I was very much on the fence on this issue prior to this, you know, frankly, I, I, I'm very persuaded that this is something we should be very cautious about considering because, um, there just seems to be a lot of data here that, you know, that points towards the conclusion that, um, you know, and, and it all depends on, you know, if something were created, how, how large scale is it? How, how robust is it? But, um, at the end of the day, there, there are just going to be, the number of emergency service calls that come into Buncombe County in our partnerships every year, that's kind of a fixed number, right? Like what we do up here doesn't change that. So we have a system out there today that was developed to meet in the most efficient way that people, people devised to meet it, both with the county and our nonprofit partners, to meet that need with the resources that they have. So that's the system we have today. And the report really affirms that it's working pretty well. well. There's great relationships between the nonprofit groups and the county, which you don't see everywhere. The relationships are good, the service levels are good. You know, could things be better? Of course, they can always be better, and our job is to always figure out how to, how to, how to make it better. And I think that our commission has expressed support for potentially investing more, you know, to increase the pay of these hardworking people in this sector who, you know, don't make much money for doing very hard work and, and for other needs. So, I don't think we're saying that we would never invest more to improve the system, I think there's an openness to doing that. But, you know, the idea of creating, you know, an expanded, new entity within the system we have today, it does, it does appear that the, you know, the data strongly indicates it would financially divert significant resources from the existing efforts and organizations that are doing this work today. And I just, I would just like to read a couple of the sections from the report that I thought The, the report found that the, the current EMS system in Buncombe County is a well-planned and well-thought-out system. The county EMS has a fleet of 14 ambulances, 10 of those staffed and staged throughout the county, and then Barnersville, Lester, Reams Creek, and Riceville each provide one ALS ambulance. The working, the working relationship is positive, but let me just kind of skip to the conclusions. So to better understand an economic impact, MS, FES, your organization, looked at Fairview Fire Department. Fairview had 830 trips they billed for 2017. This is on page 16, the top, the top of that page. So, Fairview Fire Department had 830 trips they billed for in 2017. Out of those trips, they billed for $392,000, but only received 67% of the billed funds. This means that Fairview Fire Department, who provides two ambulances, only received $262,000 to support the cost of providing two ambulances. The cost to Fairview for those two ambulances would include the normal salary range of someone trained to the level of a paramedic, the medical supplies used, and the equipment used. If an external company arrived today and started running calls in the Fairview District, running half of the 830 trips would take approximately $131,000 from Fairview's income. If this were to happen, Fairview would most likely need to cut its second ambulance and terminate staff. This change wouldn't provide any more of a service than is in place now, it would simply reduce the resources used by the Fairview Fire Department and allow the external company to provide a service. The second option would be for the county to increase, to allow Fairview to increase its tax rate by one cent to cover the loss of income. So, yeah, again, if we raise all the rates, then, then, then they wouldn't have to cut their services. But if we, if we aren't committed to raising the taxes, then undeniably, we would, these, these existing organizations, the funds that are diverted would come directly out of their budget. So, I, so I, I just think this is something we need to be very cautious about. I think it's an important decision, and I just, I wanted to raise my concerns about, about consideration of this, you know, based on, based on this report.
So.
I'll just.
You go ahead.
Thanks. Just briefly, similarly, I've approached this sort of with a very open mind and wanting to see data, and I've approached the work session we did with local fire chiefs in a similar way. I see our responsibility at the commission level is helping to think about this on a systems level, making sure that residents in our community have access to the best services possible, and always thinking about how to improve those services, and also the cost burden of those services. And to me, this report has helped clarify some of the questions we didn't have answers to in December. And what it points to, to me, is that if you are looking at this from a systems view, what's best for the community as a whole, it, based on what I know right now, it feels hard to justify moving forward in the way that's been proposed. So that's where I'm landing right now, based on what we're hearing. But I think it's been important, to me, there's dots between those conversations with the fire chiefs and the conversations with EMS, and trying to connect the dots in all of these and figure out what, how do we allocate the limited resources available in our community to make sure the highest level of service is available in the, to everyone possible? So, that's where I land on it.
We, the majority of the commission attended a funeral last week for a fire chief, and I was reminded of those families of fire districts. Is there a place for improvement with them? Yes, we know that now, and they know that as well. But, seeing, seeing those families and the tireless work they have done, firefighters, county firefighters going out, EMS, not being paid well, but still doing this work, that was a message sent home to me, and it's, it's a passion, it's, it's a generations, and like I said, there, there is room for improvement, but unless we're prepared to do both, raise, raise taxes and do this, I can't see doing something that's going to cause irreparable harm to those fire districts.
So I want to read, you know, one of the things that is missing in this report, not, not the report, the report's excellent, I want to commend you for the report, it provides us a lot of data, it also gives us some information, you know, with, that we can look at for improvement. But, but also, I mean, it just shows that we have a very professional, professionally run EMS team and, and fire team. So, we also, what we're looking at is the, is the partnership between two very professional organizations. I mean, I don't, you know, I've known the, most of these folks only the time that I've been on the board, except for the young men and women that, you know, out of our churches and other areas that we have, that we come to know. But these are two professional organizations that we're looking at. And in, on page 16, under, under your analysis on engaging these two together, you state in the study that if the county allows for the external company to start providing ALS services, county needs to enter into a service agreement, that the agreement should set key performance standards, indicators, and minimum requirements on the level of care required, and that the county should inspect the new organization periodically throughout the year to ensure that they are providing such level of care as detailed and required within the service agreement. I know for sure that there is no one on this board that does not have the best interest of, of all of our first responders, and will support funding and, and as a matter of fact, are pushing for increased funding in most of these areas. When we met before and we, we voted to do this, we voted to have the medic reviewed and to see if medic was a fit within this organization, to try to see if this would work. So this is not something that, you know, we would be doing with a, with a blind eye and, and doing as a guarantee forever. This would be, there would be requirements, and we would look at this, and we review it, and we would take your, your recommendations. And that's the way that I would be supportive of it, is being able to, to do it in that, in that fashion.
But just to be clear, the recommendation is to not do it.
That's his recommendation.
That's right, I just want to be clear that, that is what the recommendation is.
That is his.
If you're saying we're following the recommendations, the overall recommendation is to, is to not do this.
But, one of the, one of the reasons that we, we hired your group, which I thought was the main reason, is to review medic, because we had agreed that we would extend this agreement and to, to work together to make this work, to provide a, a greater level of service, in however you measured that. That's, that was the intent originally. Now, we have received information on the entire county that gives us great information and gives us some caveats that we would have to watch and be very, very careful of, and for that, I'm very, very grateful. I'm not sending signals of panic or anything like that. I think that the cooperation, I think these organizations are professional enough, that this board is strong enough and professional enough in its commitment to the, to people in Buncombe County, to, to take your recommendation on page 16 and put those parameters in there to test this, to see if it works.
Going back, if we look at page 16 again, and help me understand this, being a numbers person, 830 trips, right, is what was taken?
That's billable trips, yes, sir.
And average trip is billed out at how much?
If you look at Fairview's numbers.
Eight hundred.
Yeah, you would have to look at Fairview's and actually what they receive, three.
Or, well, I want, I'd like to know what they actually billed, if 800 calls at $800 is a little over $3 million.
Yeah, but they're not going to receive, that's nowhere near what you're going to receive.
Nowhere near what you're going to receive.
Absolutely. What you bill, you're only going to collect, theirs is 66%.
So that would be 1.6 million, 1.7 million?
Are you billing an individual, or you, or do you have a contract in place?
I don't know, I didn't, I didn't do this.
It's all about how they bill. It's all about what their billing rates are, what their, you know, are they billing, or is it federal funded money that's coming to them? Is it nursing home money? Is it contracted money? Every bit of that was kind of looked at and included. One thing we do is work really hard, I do as an overseer of this, is to reduce everything to about 25 pages. Most reports I see generated are around 100 pages. They're so full of feel, that when you read it, you don't understand it. We try to provide you data that, one, explains the situation, but then it also gives you data that you can move even further, that you can take numbers and add things to, to see what that number would actually generate. So that's what we've done.
One, one more question. You brought up, and I don't know where you got your answers from.
Yeah.
But Skyland basically told you that by Buncombe County adding another ambulance to the area, that they lost stuff. We haven't put an ambulance on. So, that's what I'd like to know, because that ambulance that's out at Rambles used to sit in Skyland. We have not issued, put another ambulance out for service in Buncombe County.
The, and again, it addressed that, on this, on this report, we only interview who we have to. We never want to look like it's biased in any way. So, the only people that we actually had conversations with was Fairview, Skyland. We emailed for further information from the Rescue Squad, the county EMS director, yourself, and I got a receipt to call from the county medical director. That's the only six people that we talked to. And the reason we contacted those fire departments is when we looked at their raw data, we can actually see VIN numbers. So when we recognized multiple VIN numbers, we recognized maybe that they are running, we need to know if they're running them simultaneously. So, that's what we recognized with those two, and when we called and asked, are you running multiple ambulances, and if so, how? That's the, that's the answers we got back.
Well, I think Skyland really wanted to try to go up into the ambulance business, but it, it hasn't worked, and basically the four, there's four, I think, fire departments that's going to come back to us are looking for money already.
All right, Commissioner, so we've had, we've had a lot of discussion here, so is there a motion? Motion to approve what? Could you be a little more specific?
A motion to approve that medic would be put on the rolls, the radios be turned on to 700 service, and it'd be a five-year contract, but each year, we look at to make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do.
Okay, thank you. All right, there's a motion and a second. We will take public comment on the motion. Let's go ahead and do that. Let's open it up for public comment. Mr. Yeltsin, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Sheriff. I know it's hard for you to get to the mic. I didn't want to hear the noise.
Welcome to committee.
I've never seen such a complicated mess. Guys, all you got to do is look at garbage. Cities throughout the United States did one simple thing: the government bids against a private company. And whoever can provide that service the cheapest gets the bid. Your numbers are flawed, because you don't know what percent of those numbers were Medicare and Medicaid, and how many times your Buncombe County ambulances were taking people to nursing homes for dialysis. I know, because I've spent a bunch of time there. The question is, can the private entity do it for the amount that the government gives them if they had a territory? That would keep you from losing 11 million to 18 million, remember the numbers? So you better not pass anything today until you get all your numbers straight and break out what your private contractor can do. Because if the government could do it better, why aren't you all hauling the trash in Buncombe County? It's simple as the nose on your face, guys. It's a simple thing. You set the criteria you want, and you let them bid for it. Now you tell me what's wrong with that. If nothing, you want to try, give them a territory. Which fire department, by the way, has the most problems with their ambulances and can't afford them? Talk to your private contractor and see if they'll take that territory. Because very obviously, Fairview didn't offset their costs, so if, if the private company can go in there and do it and offset the costs, guess what? Let the citizens of the Fairview Fire District have a reduction in their fire tax. Because if I'm not mistaken, Fairview has a ladder truck, and I don't think there's too many tall buildings in Fairview. And when the fire departments, if they decide to go under, they're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit running by a board, and that board will decide what they want to do with their material. It's not guaranteed to come back to the county. So let your private company bid against a section in your county, see what they can do. They might become more efficient, which would make you become more efficient. And God forbid that we save money and return taxes to the citizens.
All right, thank you. Who's next? Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'd like to give a little bit of advocacy for our group of Spanish-speaking people. I would like for this board to adequately fix this room where people can hear, if they need a hearing aid, they need it. If they need a speaking person, they need it. But it don't need to be interfering with everybody in the audience. I have no problem with these people hearing, but I don't think we're looking at something to help them out with. This is two times, and I can't even hear back there when they're speaking, so I've been patient not to holler out. So I'm addressing it up here for you to do something adequately for them when they come. They need it. Now, I think the issue regarding what you're investigating, we have, what, near 100 family care homes. We're at the top of the list when we look at the state. We're in the top, that's not counting nursing homes. We need to be adequately counting what we've got here that we need when we call for an ambulance, regardless of what that need might be. So we need to adequately do that. Retirement community is Hendersonville in Buncombe County, and it's getting more and more. So I think we need to be looking at that as well. The numbers that I'm hearing tonight in the conversation, if I was sitting up there, I know what I'd do. I'd, I'd ask for another investigation into this and, and look at everything. I don't think this gentleman's done a, a good job at all, regardless. I don't think he's went deep enough. I think it's just on the surface, and I think we need to look at it deeper. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Tully?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Um, as I was here in November, um, I think I told you everything I could about medic. Mike and Mandy came and evaluated our facility. Uh, while we, while they were there, we showed them every piece of medic. It's as transparent as possible. Now, I know there's a lot of questions as to our intentions. Number one, our intention is not to take anything out of any fire district, period. We support our fire service and, and echo Ellen. We saw that at, uh, Richard's funeral this past week. We're, it's a very strong group, that we're a part of that group. All we're asking for is when an ambulance is out of its area, we use the fire department ambulance as an example, somebody has to respond to that call. Otherwise, it could come from a much greater distance. Time equals muscle and if you have a heart attack. Um, it's been said tonight, our paramedics sit in their truck to be dispatched. Yes, they do, that's an immediate response time. We operate under North Carolina OEMS. We do not operate under the National Fire Protection Standards. North Carolina OEMS says we respond within ninety seconds. That's a protocol here locally in Buncombe County. That's to be followed. Um, again, we're not, we don't want to take anything from Buncombe County or the fire departments or any, anybody else. But the fact, in the last few months, from December to today, we responded to three hundred and forty-seven calls. That should tell you the service is needed. Otherwise, we wouldn't have been sent. Lot of those calls were emergencies, a lot of them was not. But anybody that needs an ambulance, whether it's a routine call or an emergency, should have an immediate response. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yes, ma'am. Uh, um, I'm sorry, we'll come back to you next, the lady in the back, Ms. Culba.
Leslie Culba. Um, I guess I'm from the, about those oldest L. Whitesides, and I went to school when we learned about economics. And basically, what you do if you want the strongest businesses, the strongest business models, is you have competition. You don't try to give some kind of, the difference is, these guys are independent, they're private sector, and you guys have the power. So you can, you can create your own monopoly. You can make the rules that say, well, we, you know, we don't want you. They don't have that power, so you're going to win no matter what. I would, rather than trying to make a government decision when we don't have all the information and we can't have all the information, just let the market decide by, let the best business model win or share, either way. But another thing that bothered me about this is that it seems like ambulances are being used as a cash cow because we get federal dollars. Well, we have all these bumper stickers that talk about, you know, think locally and act globally or vice versa. And the federal government, Medicaid, Medicare, that is not a sustainable program. And you can't have a sustainable business model if you're depending on, on systems like that. And so I guess the bottom line is government, the way I learned about government in this country is that you're supposed to protect the rights of people to excel. You know, we've got an opioid crisis, we just heard earlier today that there aren't enough people to help to abuse children. We don't have enough people to help, you know, the victims of rape. And we're going after somebody who's trying to help people. And so I'd like you to consider that.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
County Commissioners, I just wanted to tell you that, uh, medic has been here a long time. One of our first things in Buncombe County to show you just how we started was we had two ambulances that we bought by auction. We got them paid for and we moved on and got a new one. But one of the first things that we did with medic was the children out of Mission Hospital. This is long before the hospital had their ambulance. If a child had to go down to Winston-Salem, Duke, well, Buncombe County had a policy then, I don't, I don't know if it's still that way, uh, that the parents couldn't go with the child, they had to follow along behind. We were private and we made a ruling then that any child in Buncombe County that we needed to go down for treatment to Duke, to Winston-Salem, but, but anything, just children. We did let one parent go with that child and we took that child for free. Now, I heard here that free's not always good. That's true. We didn't do it for free because we didn't know what we were doing. We did it for free, and I'm talking about we didn't file for any monies to be returned. And it wasn't because we were not qualified to do it either. I have worked thirty-six hours at a time on that ambulance. My husband worked for Buncombe County for thirty years, retired. This is our dream and we've worked hard at it. We haven't seen this man, but he's gonna compare us. We're also members of Skyland Fire Department. I've been a fireman for a long time. But I'm not running a fire department, I'm running an ambulance service. They're two different things. All of a sudden, fire departments wanted to get ambulances in there, but that don't mean that they're a fire truck. If I bought a fire truck right now, I could fight a fire, but that's not what I'm in business for. We're two separate entities that need to be considered as two separate entities, fire department, ambulance service. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. My name's John Knowles, and I came here tonight after reading this document online because I wanted to share some information that I gleaned from it. Um, I worked for Buncombe County as a full-time paramedic for about six years. And reading over this, uh, I don't really have an opinion as to whether medic should be allowed to operate in the county. Uh, that's not why, why I was concerned about coming here tonight. My concern is, is looking at the data in this, uh, I don't feel this is a really good representation of whether or not Buncombe County EMS is operating effectively. And some of the data in here, I think, i- is disconnected a little bit from the conclusions of this report. Um, some of the examples of that are, uh, in breaking down, uh, the, the data into zip codes. One of the things that stuck out to me is that the two eight eight oh six zip code has the highest population of residents. It has over thirty-eight thousand. It also has, uh, the highest call response. It has over nineteen percent of the calls that Buncombe County EMS is going to. But when you go to, uh, the, um, when you go to the, uh, two spreadsheets on page seven, for some reason, two eight eight oh six zip code isn't listed there. So it doesn't compare the response rates in the zip code that has the largest population and the highest call volumes. But if you do go to the appendix, there's a large spreadsheet there, and if you look at the bottom two rows there, that has the two eight eight oh six zip code. And when you look at the EMS response times over the last four years, they've increased. Uh, in two thousand and thirteen, uh, total response times were eight minutes, twenty-eight seconds. Now they're over nine and a half minutes in two thousand and seventeen. However, that same district, that same population, those same number of call volumes, when you compare that to the fire response, fire response has drastically reduced their response times. They've gone from over eleven minutes to under eight. This report doesn't talk and analyze at all, why is that happening? What's the difference between the fire response and the EMS response in that area? And I think that's one of the pervasive problems with this report is that it, it's not analyzing the full picture. And it is a full and complicated picture, there's a lot of stuff involved. There's finances, there's distribution of resources. Another great example where I find fault, and no offense to you, sir, I find fault with this report is it, it has the maps in there that are showing response times distributed geographically over the county. But there's no assessment of how the county is allocating its ambulances geographically. Why are we putting them where we are? Are we just putting them in the convenient fire stations because the county doesn't have the resources to house those? Or is there a better distribution of that that could be done? I want to make one last point, I know I have a few minutes.
Sorry, your, your time is up, your time is up. We have to be fair to everybody on that point. Thank you, though. All right, anyone else? All right, seeing no others, we'll bring it back to the commission, uh, for further discussion. Uh, there's a motion and a second on the table.
I'd like to clarify the, I'd like to clarify the motion. Um, what, what I'm hearing is that this would be a five-year contract with annual reviews. I'm assuming that, uh, that Attorney Frue would, would draw that contract with the proper parameters that would be in that agreement. I would assume that to be accurate, so it would be with, uh, with annual reviews to see that we're, that medic is, uh, meeting, uh, the, uh, the, what's the word I'm looking for? Let's see. Meeting the, uh, the key performance indicators as listed on page sixteen that the county would, uh, would be reviewing, so.
So it sounds like that's a clarification of the motion.
Clarification of the motion. Are you okay with that? You okay with that?
Yes.
I'd like to ask another question to clarify here.
Yes.
Are we talking about a district or are we talking about the whole county?
It's the entire county. Which, again, you know, the report recommends against this, and it's, and it specifically recommends against a countywide approach to this. Um, so I think talking about the parameters that are in here, you know, the motion itself is contemplating something totally different than what the recommendations are.
Back up one second. The county, what I'm saying, county, is they still, they still base over here. And if they're needed in the county, anywhere in the county, or they can move to a different area. So Fairview was gone, and they can move and stage at the mall up there to cover for them. If both of them were gone, that's, that's what I'm looking at, not, it's, if you put them in a, a district or just give them an area, they've got that right now, downtown Asheville. And that's, it, it opens them up that they, we can utilize them if we need them. That's if we need them. If, that's, that makes it easier for them to call them if it's close, they're the closest ambulance in that area in the county.
This is, is, you know, one last point, and I'm gonna hush, this is not super complicated, uh, at all. Um, the aim is to make sure that people in Buncombe County have an opportunity to have additional resources to respond at the time a nine-one-one call is made and that the, the, the review of that is still going to be at that, none of that's going to change. Nothing's going to change other than the fact that, that, that medic would be part of that, of that mix, part of that, uh, under, under this agreement, so.
So I'll make my final, well, go ahead, go ahead, Robert.
Okay. And I want to clarify that I think we understand everything is if Fairview was to move out, get a call, then the Tullys would move closer to Fairview to back them up, not to take that call away from Fairview. The other thing is, the final thing I'm gonna say, is there's one thing we can do something about, and there's one thing we can't do something about. The one thing we can do something about is if we need to offset to help the fire tax, we can. We cannot bring them back to life if they're not there in time.
So I, I just, here's my final thing. So we, I think we're saying different things, though, because on the one hand, we're saying it's only going to be when, you know, districts' ambulance is somewhere else. On the other hand, people keep saying, I want the closest vehicle to respond every time. Those are not the same thing. Uh, they're not. I mean, if, 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 if we say there's a countywide opportunity here, and go wherever they want, they can, just as the specific example of Fairview documents here, they, if they park their vehicle closer, then they could take, they could take that, those calls and, and take them away from the, you know, the existing infrastructure that's out there. So I, I do think we're, different things are being said here.
Okay, let's, let's change.
And, and so, so, um, here's my final comments. And I just, I also just want to say that, you know, to me, this question was never about the qualifications of medic. It's, that's never been the question. I think it's an outstanding organization and I have complete trust in, in, in their ability to, to do a great job. I think the question is whether embedding an expanded for-profit entity within the existing public and nonprofit fire district system makes the overall system better or, or, or in some ways undermines it. You know, Mr. Yelton made the, uh, made the suggestion that we, you know, we just bid all this out. We look at privatizing the overall system. And while I'm not necessarily in favor of that, I mean, in some ways, I think the concern here is that a, a public system and, and with nonprofit fire district partners, and a partially privatized system in some ways might be the least efficient method of all. Like a fully privatized system, you might get some efficiencies, but when you, when you have all these different agencies that have already built stations, bought equipment, hired staff, and then you have a private entity, uh, in, in the mix as well. It's, it, it may be a very inefficient, uh, system. So, um, I'll, I'll just, I'll leave it at that.
In that way, it reminds me a bit of some of the difficult zoning decisions that come before us, where we have to think not just of the particulars, but also of the precedent that's being set. And I just will kind of close out my comments by saying, uh, this isn't about medic or the, uh, the quality of work y'all do either. It's about the sort of systems lens and making sure that if we are moving forward, we're doing it in a way that benefits the whole system. So based on what I'm hearing from the way the motion is described, I don't see a path to supporting that.
The question I ask is, when, as we talk about this, and how are we gonna monitor this or evaluate it on an annual basis? Because to me, we need to be more specific. It wouldn't be fair to the Tullys or whoever we do this with because if we say on the one hand, we're gonna do it countywide, then we said we'll fill in here, there. You know, I guess we need to be specific. We don't need to set up something that's vague and we don't even know how to monitor.
Well, now, if I'm not mistaken, I'm pretty sure dispatch is the one that sends them out. It's not, you know, ambulance is gonna be pretty, if, um, is that correct? Dispatch will send them, correct? Okay, so.
Okay, so to Commissioner Whiteside's, um, question, could we ask Mr. Frue on, do you have an idea based on, uh, the contract that we, we've received? We've received in the past and reviewed a, a contract, I believe, with medic. Is that true? In the past, have they submitted something in the past?
They currently have a franchise for convalescent services for their, for the backup role that we've discussed this evening. Uh, there's not a formal contract. And this is just, this is an application for countywide response, uh, request. And it, I, I think Chairman Newman made the point that I was gonna address is that it, it would have to be incorporated into the EMS plan as a whole. It wouldn't be just a fill-in-a-blank unless the board wanted to make that specific, uh, charge.
So could we, could we, uh, agree to, to extend the contract tonight? And we don't have a contract in front of us. So we can't, we, we don't have a contract, but can, but can, but can we, can we vote to extend that contract and add the parameters, uh, at a later date? So that we're not talking about going through this whole thing again? Can we, can we, can we do that?
Not really sure how to answer that. Uh, I guess if you want to do that now, I, I would request some direction from the board where you want us to aim. Because that might take time.
There is no contract, there's no.
No, and, and I think if we're even talking about that, if we're talking about weaving something in, then we would need input from everyone. Because we're, we're not experts on this, we don't, we don't know, we don't know the parameters, how to weave anything in. So I, and I don't think it's fair to ask you to do that without input from EMS and everybody involved if, if this notion is that everybody's all gonna work together, so I don't see how that.
I agree that the EMS system would have to be involved.
Maybe, maybe I misunderstood. I'm saying they basically, they've said they're not really putting another ambulance on. They have an ambulance down here. It gets turned on. Okay, this ambulance leaves down here and has to go somewhere. Well, that opens it up for Buncombe County, or it opens it up for Fairview. Or it could open it up for somewhere else. Right now, the fire departments that are wanting money from this board already have ambulances. So that's the ones that's going to be coming in asking for money, whether we do this or not. That's the one thing that we have. He's not asking, all he's asking for is if not taking the district at all. If he's needed in Fairview, or if he's needed in Black Mountain, where we have the ambulance, or wherever. If he's the closest, and he's not, if he isn't, he's not going. But at least they can see him, and they can talk to him. And if they're not the closest, they don't need to be the one going. I agree with that. They do not need to be the one leaving if they're not the closest.
But in order, in order to, if we're going to have an agreement in order to protect the county and Mr. Tally, we've got to have a contract, folks.
Okay.
And I can't vote on anything until we have a contract, something, you know, we've, if we're going to do our fiduciary responsibility, folks, we've got to have a contract, something we can review and something we can vote on. But what we're talking about now, we don't have anything to vote on.
Okay, so let me, I'm gonna take a final stab at this. If, I'm gonna try to take a final stab at this, and I think everybody on the board is going to be okay with me taking a final. Okay, so. And you're probably going to have to answer this. From a procedural standpoint, did I assume the first when I changed it? When I, did he allow me to? Did it become my?
It's still Commissioner Fryer's motion. He would have to relinquish it.
So I, so I'm going to ask you, I'm going to ask you a way to, and I'm assuming this is amending his, I would ask him to amend his motion.
You can do that, yes.
I can do that, okay. So I'm going to ask Commissioner Fryer to amend his motion for a, a con, to direct staff, the county attorney, to bring a contract back to the commission that is a collaboration between Medic and the facts that they've given us on page 16, with key performance standards in it, to bring a contract back to this board that we can vote on that contract. But that the motion be that we direct staff to do that. Are you okay with that motion, Commissioner Fryer?
Most certainly.
Okay. So we need a second on that motion.
A second.
Okay, so it's a, it's a, it's a very substantial amendment to the motion. So it's basically not to approve anything, it's to, it's to draft a contract.
To draft a contract, yes.
All right.
Because we have to have a, we have to have a contract. And what I'm saying, and you know, is that, you know, if it comes back the right way, I'm going to support that contract. But we need to, we need to have a contract that we can, that we can do that. So we've actually moved this forward from where we were before in that, that now, now we're going to get something in writing back to us that we can, that we can vote on.
Once we have input from all the people involved.
Yeah.
And we're directing staff to do that.
Just for clarification from my perspective, I would just ask that we need to, should I just work with the EMS director, see how many units would be to come into the EMS system? Because that would be the question. How many units of Medic would be included within the EMS response system? Because their response system is a fluid thing. It's not just someone moves and someone fills the blank all the time. Sometimes someone's in motion and they look at the geodetic data to see where people are, to determine the best access to come in and make a response.
So I think to answer your question, that that would be part of the review with EMS, and then we're going to get the data from, because we can sit up here and talk this thing all night long. Commissioner Fryer, some others maybe, they're going to have more detail on this, on where this is over there and over there. And I don't, all we're wanting, and I believe the board wants, is to, and I'm not trying to speak for the board, but I think that we just want to make sure that our fire, that our EMS is protected and that the people of Buncombe County are protected. And we're going to be committed to both of those, but we don't have a contract tonight. So I'm saying direct staff to draw that contract up and bring it, bring it back to us in a collaboration between the systems.
May I make a proposed amendment to your amendment?
You can, sure, yes.
That staff address the issue of how a loss of funding to local nonprofits, or how the loss of funding to the system would be addressed, and whether that would include raising taxes, or what other strategies are available? I don't see how, from, the way I would approach this is those two questions are related to each other. So my amendment, which, my friendly amendment to you would be that that's included in instructions to staff.
But I think we're going to, I think that that is, I think that that can be part of the review, certainly. So I would, I think I would, I think I would accept that. However, we must under, we, okay. I know, I told you I was going to take a stab at it. I didn't say I was going to pull it off, okay?
You have a whole leg right now.
Have a what?
You have taken the stabbing and you have the whole leg now.
So anyhow, we've received information from one agency, and you're very professional. We appreciate that. But that's not, you know, total scripture, as I would say it. You know, we have some other input that we're going to have to receive, including what, but I don't want to scare folks into this tax thing, you know, because we've, we've all, we all have a commitment to make sure the firefighter's taken care of. We're going into budget time. We're going to make sure of that. So, but we don't have a contract. We've got to have a contract in all these conditions, including what Commissioner Beach-Farah said is, needs to be part of that evaluation. But we got to have a contract, directing staff to bring that contract back to us so we can, so we can vote on the particulars of the contract, you know.
Can we call?
So, you know, here's the, here's the challenge I have with, I mean, in some ways, I like this motion, but part of the problem is that this could be so many different things, right? I mean, it could be this open-ended, countywide, whoever gets called first, you know, where this entity would have broad discretion for how they want to operate within the county. Or it could be this extremely targeted, you know, in this very small percentage of the county population, where the call times, you know, we'd all like to see them be a little bit better. That's a very small percentage of Buncombe County's population. So I feel like, you know, we need to give some, if we're going to ask them to draft a contract, we need to give some direction on, are we talking about countywide, open-ended? Or are we talking about, if we're talking about the recommendations of the report, I mean, the report, it says, it's probably not a, you know, probably not a great idea. If you are going to do something, it should be very targeted, and it should be, you know, it should be just narrowly focused on these areas where, you know, some additional service maybe could help, but not undermine the well-performing parts of our system. So for, I'm not going to support a motion to kind of craft an open-ended countywide system, because I just am not convinced that that's in the community's best interest, and I don't want to spend a bunch of time on it. If, if that's, if that's the nature of the kind of contract you want to see, then I won't support it. If you were giving direction for a very targeted type of service, I would, you know, I'd at least be open to talking about it more.
Okay, so.
One more question.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Targeted, that means we give him a little area. He's got one of them already, downtown Asheville. All they're asking for is if, if there is an area that needs somebody. It don't matter if it's in Fairview, Black Mountain, Hominy, Barnardsville, wherever. If they can be utilized in that area at a time, that they can be called, not, not go to it. If dispatch sends them, all they're asking is for the dispatch to be able to send them if they're needed in that area. Right now, they can't send them to them areas, and that's why the call times are more other than that. That's, that's all it is, is if they're needed and they're the closest and they can be utilized at that point, dispatch, 911 dispatches them to that area.
All right, we spent a lot of time on this. Any last comments?
Did that help you any?
That did not, no.
Well, my last comment would be this.
Thank you for trying.
We said, let's let the staff take it and bring back to us what would be best for the system. I mean, that's what they're paid for, and they'll do a good job. We got the staff who will do it and do it right. So let's let the staff take it, and then they'll bring it back to us.
Well, but let me ask you this. I mean, do you want, I mean, and I'll just be honest. Again, there's been a lot of turf around this issue. This has been a very political issue. It always has been, you know, forever. So if we are asking the staff, including the fire district chiefs, to give us their professional opinion, I would not presume the outcome of that right now in terms of a contract at all, or what that contract might include. So if we really want to ask, right now, we've asked an outside person who doesn't have, you know, does not from here, is from the other part of the state, got some expertise. We asked him to bring this forward because frankly, it has been so political in the past, and that's what I like about it. But if we are going to ask the officials who are currently doing this work for their professional opinion, let's don't handcuff them into what that might be.
So is it, Chairman, is it okay if I ask Medic a clarifying question?
Yes.
Before we wrap this up?
Yes.
Could you come back up, Mr. Tally? So I would like to clarify what it is that you have requested for Buncombe County as far as your services. Can you very simply say that for the benefit of the board as well as Mr. Frue in direction? I, you know, with all due respect to everybody on this board, we don't know anything about this, don't you? We're trying to balance the, you know, the, we're trying to balance this thing, and all of us want to provide the best service to the county, period.
And I understand that.
So can you just say what you said the last time, very, very briefly, what you want, the service you would like to help Buncombe County with?
The way we function on a day-to-day basis is since we don't have a Buncombe County franchise to operate an emergency system, that literally ties the hands of the dispatchers.
Dispatch, okay.
Our 911 center dispatchers, and I welcome y'all to go talk to them every single day. We need to send the ambulance out here. Medic's got one sitting on Charlotte Street, but we can't because of a franchise ordinance. So we have to send somebody past us or from a farther-away district. That does that patient or that citizen no good. The dispatchers know typically where we're at by talking to us on an old radio system. So if the CAD system is placed in our trucks, they can look on their computer screen and see where an ambulance is at if they need it. Now, let's give, I'll give you an example, and I'll use Fairview. If there's a medic truck riding through Fairview's fire district, and their ambulance is in service at the station, then Fairview is who should do that call. Same for Skyland. Our main station is in Skyland. There are seven ambulances sitting in the building. If Skyland's ambulance is sitting in quarters, that's who they need to send, is Skyland, unless Skyland calls and needs some help. That gives that dispatcher the option to send a medic truck that's already in Skyland. We're not asking to go camp out in anybody's fire district. We don't want to do that. Nobody can afford to do that. But there's a lot of times, and they're getting more and more as the warm weather happens, we see a lot of these overdoses and these children that were talked about tonight. We transport those people in the back of our ambulances. Now, I don't want to not be able to respond to a heart attack on Longshells Road, but they can send me to downtown Asheville to respond on the same heart attack. That makes no sense at all. That is not a proper use of resources. So again, we are not wanting to take anything from our fire departments. We strongly support our firefighters. Does that answer your question, Joe?
Yes, it does. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, sir. Yes, sir.
I just got, I've been watching Keith here, and I think we ought to give him a chance to be the last speaker, because I think he's agreed with some stuff and disagreed, and where you would stand now.
In summary.
Interesting.
In summary.
One, just apologize. Being a neighbor is tough on me. I got two ruptured discs in service. So that's the reason I struggle with that.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, you can, yeah.
The mic's not working for some reason.
The mic, something's wrong, yeah. Is it on? Make sure it's on.
Okay.
There you go.
It's not that I, I'll start all over since then here. It's not that I don't agree that providing more ambulances is a better service, 100% better. And the more you put, the better off you are. It's just the financial reflection of that and how it will affect you. That was my job in this report, is to say, like, we used the NFPA 1710 standard. It's actually a stricter standard than the state standard in Buncombe County's 92nd out-the-door shoot time. We use a one-minute time in the fire service, so we provide the strictest standard that we can provide you. And as an old fire chief, I'll, my people are going to be out the door in a minute, period. So it's a management reflection there. A little bit of a war story. I'm all about adding services. And as a fire chief, a lot of times, we work strongly to put financial as not a deciding factor, as if we can provide service, and then we actually make the decision to find funding to support that theory. I had four stations under my control as a fire chief, and one of my outlined stations, I put there because the response time was about 18 minutes in that area. So, and that was medical. I put a substation there with two firefighters and was criticized because what can two firefighters with a fire truck do? Nobody really understood that I made that decision because of cardiac arrest. It was not the fire side. It was the cardiac arrest side. If I could put a station there, I reduced the times in that area to four minutes, 4.44 minutes, if I can remember correctly. Now, I'll tell you where I came from and where I commend you, and this is some of my shaking of my head, is you're looking outside the box. The EMS director I dealt with at the time, I made the comment, if you allow me to put one of your paramedics on a fire truck, we can now provide ALS coverage in that area in 4.44 seconds. I was told that it would be a cold day in a certain place if a paramedic ever rode a fire truck. That's the response I got from my government agencies. So I commend you for looking outside the box. And I'm, again, I draw back to, if you want to add more service, so be it. But it is going to affect you financially, and that was mine. Now, one thing I will clarify, too, that I heard with the zip code of the last five-year data, you know, and stuff like that, and EMS changing, the way you work with AVL system is you do dispatch to closest unit. If you have management involved with decision-making of response times, they may shift a piece of apparatus into a location to see how it affects the system. And that's how touchy these systems are, is I may would move a piece of apparatus into an area just to see how it affects it. There's a lot of speculation, but when you actually move the piece of apparatus, that's when you find out reality. So if you look at the numbers over the last five years, they will change. But it could have been a management issue of moving a piece of apparatus to see if they can lower response time somewhere that affected the outcome. Does that make sense? And then, so that might be the Skyland issue. And, and then so that might be the Skyland issue. It could be the, the Asheville issue of EMS time went up, fire service went down. That could have been the fire department added an ambulance and EMS moved out further from that position to cover another area. So you may be getting a fire service ALS on-site two minutes faster, but EMS may have moved two minutes less. Does that make sense? So it's all managerial when these decisions are happening, and that's where it's really hard to provide a study, looking back five, ten years, because the data changes. If you move a piece of apparatus, your data will change.
All right. Thank you very much. And thank you again for all your analysis of the system.
Yes, thank you very much.
All right. Commission, um...
So one last comment, and then I'm going to call, then I'm going to call the question. Sorry, sorry. But, so Mr. Frew, the, the nine-one-one discussion from, from medic, allowing access to be able to receive those calls, I think, is the starting point for the contract? And, and...
I, I think so. We'd have to verify with state agencies.
That's countywide.
If we, if the county entered into a contract with medic, creating them as a, essentially a county agency, would they have access to the radio? I think so.
So it's a franchise, and so that would be the information that you would have to compile with, to come back to us.
So, so countywide, you're talking about?
If it's a franchise agreement, I'm assuming it's countywide.
Okay.
It does not have to be.
Doesn't have to be.
All right. Let's vote on this.
Can we clarify what we're voting on?
So we're voting on a motion to direct staff to develop a contract that will be brought back to the commission.
That's correct. All questions?
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no.
No.
All right. I believe it passes four to three.
Wait a minute. What were we voting on?
The motion to direct staff to bring a contract back to the commission. Are you okay with your vote on that? Do you want to, if it wasn't clear, I don't want to, we talked about this for an hour. I want to make sure we got this right.
I voted for him to bring the contract back, too.
Okay, that's right. That's right. Okay. That motion passes four to three. So thank you all for everyone's input on this. It's an important issue and we'll talk about it again when we have a contract in front of us. All right. Thank you. Thank you all. All right. Moving on to the next item, which is going back to the item that Mr. Frew talked about on the landfill bid issue.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, this board has previously approved opening of a new sale at the landfill. The process is in place so far. There's been a needs assessment. This board has approved it. The matter's gone out to bid. We've evaluated the bids and want to have a formal approval by the board of the bid. It's a recommendation of staff, Chip Jingles, the director up there, and our outside consultants at Enveramino Infrastructure Consulting, that the board accept the lowest responsive, responsible responsive bid of Young and McQueen grading of one million, one-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy dollars.
I'll make a motion to accept.
A second.
All right. Motion and second questions? So my only question is, sounds, sounds like a sound recommendation. Why wasn't it put on the agenda? Did we just, did it happen on, is it a timing issue in terms of it not being on the agenda?
Two things. Timing issue, they had the approval, I think the bids came in in January. I heard yesterday that there were sort of some time crunches, and I saw in the paperwork that Young and McQueen had actually extended the opening of their bidding, and they wanted to have a contract at least approved and in place by tomorrow. Typically, I think I mentioned in pre-session, it's been the practice of the prior administration county manager to have in the budget ordinances a blanket procedure whereby the chairman or the county manager can sign contracts if the board has already approved the project and approved the funding. So we're moving away from that kind of blanket language in the budget ordinance, and this is just a step in that direction to bring formal approvals for formal bidding contracts. This would be more than five-hundred thousand dollars for construction and whatnot, and more than ninety thousand dollars for, for business personal property to the board for formal approval.
So there is some time sensitivity in terms of approving it. But in the future, in the future, these would just be placed on the agenda, perhaps on the consent agenda?
Yes, sir. We certainly hope so. We're getting really close to having a good process in place for a chain of command, so to speak, or approval process in place for these approvals. And that's part of what Workday does and our performance management people.
Okay.
So Chairman, just a quick comment. The reason I wanted to, this to be done in regular session and for Attorney Frew to say what he just said, is so people know that, that we, we're not doing it the way it used to be done before, that these bids are coming back to the board for a vote, whether in consent or whether in the, in the main, you know, meeting or not, it's not signed off by the county manager and/or chairman. So I just want to make sure that.
No, I appreciate that, and I'm all for it. I just, even better would be if it was on the, on the posted agenda, so everyone could kind of see it.
Yeah, great question, Chairman. Thank you.
I just want to make one little tiny comment. I'm on the board of MSD, and what they do, and I think it's really helpful, they show like the top three or four bids, so people can see the difference.
I don't know if we had time to put that on. There were eight bids that came in.
I don't mean now, but like in the future.
Yes, sir.
You know, like the top three or four.
There were, there were eight, just so the board knows and the public knows, eight, and they were pretty tight spread. So they were all very competitive.
Helpful to see that, but yeah, okay.
And, and it was, it was helpful on the board with her, and not, it was not always the lowest bid that they went for. So, but it was good information to have, so I would agree with Commissioner Frost.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. Is there any public comment on this motion to accept the...
I'd like to hear from Chip on this, too, a little bit. Because he's the one that, you know, he's bringing it back to us and has an idea, so I'd like to hear from you, sir.
Well, it's very needed. At the landfill, most people refer to our landfill as the landfill. But we have two landfills there. One is MSW and one is CND. And this project, the solid waste department has been working on for years. And like Attorney Frew said, we're just trying to follow the right processes and get it done.
And it's, it's basically bringing up your solid waste from construction to a new pit.
So for what this is, like I said, we have two, actually two landfills there. One MSW, which is lined, and one is CND, which is unlined. And right now, the way that we're bringing in construction and demolition material, by the end of this year, our CND landfill will be at capacity. And we need to make this move now to develop a new sale for CND. And it's going to take approximately six months to develop that sale. So that's why everything is so time sensitive.
One, excuse me, one more question, and I'll get away from it. But using some of our equipment to, to grade this out, are we utilizing some of that in that way, too?
Yes, sir. Right now, we have, the county has saved approximately a half million dollars by doing work in our department. So we have some very skilled people in our department that are working, they're doing clearing and grubbing and prepping it, and that's brought the cost of this project down.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Yelton?
Glad to have somebody from business down to landfill, because he might take what I'm saying and consider it. I figured the CND was growing pretty fast with all the buildings going on. And one of the things that you can do in CND is all the wood could be separated, and you could reduce your costs, because then you can make mulch out of it. There's a business on the river that's making and surviving on scrap wood and trees, its rubs. So that will help you as far as extending the life of the new sale. I'm sure you need a new sale. The other thing you can do is separate all metal, and that's, can be sold and you can make money on it. When I first went to work at the landfill many years ago, some of you might remember that, I don't know if you do or not, but I found out we were paying seven dollars a unit to get our refrigerators freon removed, when all you had to do was have people pay you for it. So that's another thing, if you'll separate the metal out. Also, you can take all the concrete, brick, block, and re-grind it. You could put it in a pile and re-grind it and use it for daily cover, or you could use it for stone for your roads in the landfill. All of these things will help the overall life of the landfill, and he, he knows that, and it's hard to do. But you can get your people to do it, because I can tell you, when I first was hired, I ate my lunch at the landfill for about a year. And I never had a contractor refuse to do what saved him money. And it's very simple to do. You just require that it be done this way, and it can be done. And another point and question, and I'll send a note to you, Mandy, on this. I want to start monitoring the landfill. I, I look for your checks to be printed on the internet somewhere. I want to see the money income each month from the revenue and how it's spent, because you are going to have to cover your landfill up. And I do have a strong interest in that, so whoever's responsible for that, please put me in contact with them. I'll send a note to you, Mandy. And I'd like to be able to monitor the person that has the information and talk with him on it. I'm not trying to tell you how to run the landfill, that's his job, but it will extend the life of your landfill and give you some beneficial product. Takes a little effort, but it's something you should consider. And I'm sure he definitely needs a new sale with what's been going on.
All right. Who's next? Mr. Rice? Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This landfill fund is a really big one. I'm glad Don's talking about this check online, you know? We want to keep up with it. You think but seven people up there, there's a lot of eyes out here in the country. Anyway, I heard just a little glimpse, the lawyer, that's the way they are, they don't want to tell you the whole story, just a little bit hooking, get you pay. But I heard a little procedure there about budget ordinance that Wanda used to do, and it's done differently. When did that change? Tonight, when he said that? Or is the procedure changed? Because if the procedure has changed, when did it change, and when did budget ordinance change? That procedure that you're talking about tonight? Now, I don't know. That's, that's what I sound, sounded me like with the attorney talking, so if I'm out of order on that statement, please help me, but I'd like to know. This landfill brings in big, big money. This, this is big money. And I've seen it transferred, and this might be what you were referring to earlier, is transferred out of one into another pot of money. And that money, you know, they'd bring it in ten million or six million or whatever and transfer it over. I don't know what the procedures are, but I just wanted to know if something has changed there that makes this different tonight, and what that change is. I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else? And Mr. Frew, would you respond to that question, please?
Simply, the, the budget that we're still operating under, the fiscal year eighteen budget, has a provision in it that if the board has approved it and funded it, then it allows the county manager or, and the county manager, or either of them, to execute the contracts as and when they're approved by staff. Here, I thought that we're just double-dipping. I didn't have to come here. I didn't have to ask Manny to put it on the agenda, but we are, times are changing. And I just see it as good practice.
Okay. Well, that's a great answer. So, so question would be, so question would be, and thank you for doing it. So would it be your recommendation that we adopt a policy so that that is the norm? I appreciate y'all doing it tonight, although it was not required by county policy. Should we, should we consider doing that?
I, I think so. I mean, it, part of the, part of what we have been doing is just trying to get the management and budget people to work on systems to get things to the county manager or to the chair for signature. This is just a part of the formal bidding process. It could probably just simply be a policy of county management to be in compliance with general statute, because the, the idea is just to follow the general statute.
Okay. Sounds like we should. All right. Any further questions? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And that concludes new business. We come to public comment. I'd like to, let me share the protocol for public comment. The time limit for individual comment to the board is three minutes. If your time expires, you can leave any questions, along with your name and address and phone number, with the county manager. Board members are not expected to comment on matters during public comment. This is the time for the public to speak to us. And the board reserves the right to deny public address on subjects that we've previously had public comment on earlier in the evening. So if you'd like to address the commission, just let us know your name and where you live, and who would like to go first. Yes, sir, you can go first, and then, and then the young man will go second.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Mark Diaz, and I'm a member of the Board of Directors at the Sandy Most Community Center, and I'm here to report on our internet project. First off, I would like to thank this body for providing us the funding to provide this valuable resource to our community members for whom many is the only access to the internet. A little about myself, I'm a retired federal employee with thirty-seven years of federal service, and I have an extensive background in telecommunications. As such, I am the technical lead who oversaw the installation of the infrastructure, such as the optical cable and transmission equipment, which makes up our internet system. A little about our system, our equipment and access is provided by AT&amp;T. Our backbone fiber is supported by modern packet switch transmission equipment and on-demand bandwidth. We have an enterprise-level Wi-Fi system comprised of two access points, which allows us to offer twenty-four-seven service to our community. Overall, the system is managed by AT&amp;T for us, but I do monitor via AT&amp;T's web interface the health and status of our local area network. We officially came online at the beginning of this year. Since then, we have noticed a steady increase in the number of users. For example, for the month of January, we noted four-hundred-and-sixty-five total user devices. As of thirty-one March, it has increased to five-hundred-and-eighty-one. As the weather gets better, we expect that number to increase. In summary, again, we thank you for giving us the tools to provide this opportunity to our community, and look forward to your continued support. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions. And I'd also like to mention that we have a few community members here with me who would like to share their story and the impact of this project on our community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. This young man will go next. Yes, sir, it's your...
And I believe, I'd like to have ten minutes. How many people do I need to, in order to do that? Eight?
So, okay, and so, and so the eight folks, if you want ten minutes, we do, we, we can do that. There's eight folks who need to identify themselves, and they will need to give up their time. So if they raise their hand, they will not be speaking tonight.
Need to stand with me, or?
If they want to stand with you, that'd be, that'd be just fine. Sure.
So do I need to say them?
Um, no, we're good. Just, but the folks who are up front, you won't be giving your own public comment. You're dedicating your time to this gentleman.
Thank you. Okay. My name is Bruno Hozariz. I am, I've been living in Buncombe County now for nineteen years. As a Buncombe County resident, I definitely see the great community that we have. And I wanted to talk about the, as some of you might know, recently, over the weekend, since Saturday morning, I, I myself probably have a couple of gray hairs growing already because of the constant attacks that our community has had over the last four days. I'm talking about the immigrant community and the great support that the community at large has had on, or has given the community. I'm talking about the immigrant community, I'm talking about the LGBTQ community, I'm talking about the African-American community, and the homeless community that have come together, along with other faith groups, in order to counterattack this rogue administration set by immigration. And I believe that it is your responsibility as county commissioners to hold some sort of accountability towards this agency, since you yourself said you have a responsibility for the Buncombe County community. I am here because there have been human rights violations in your, in your own territory. There, as of today, Tuesday... There, uh, as of today, Tuesday, the Supreme Court has also ruled, um, that deportations due to criminal, uh, crimes is unlawful and it's unconstitutional. That being said, are you willing to let something like this go? Something unconstitutional go in Buncombe County? I know that the sheriff is not willing to say anything on that behalf. I know that they're not in communication with him, uh, so, so do he says. But I know that in order for, uh, immigration to come and to, since to a territory, they have had to had a conversation with either law enforcement, that'd be, uh, APD in Asheville or Buncombe County. I am here to tell you that my community has not slept since Saturday morning. We have heard of many, many people in the Buncombe County area being distressed and not talk about, talking about also these kids, these children who are in schools. And some of them had, did not even show up to their schools because of this. So what are you willing to do to set something straight? To give a message to this institution, um, that has terrorized a community at large? I don't know if you have seen the streets at times over the weekend, but no one out there, in construction workers, have not been working in the constructions out there. Um, certain restaurant workers have not been out there. This impacts everybody, not just the immigrant community, not just the LGBTQ community. It impacts all of us. What are you willing to do for your people, your community? What are you, what's the message you're sending to these kids as well? We have some young people here who are looking at you, who will go to school tomorrow and will talk about what you're gonna do in the future. I admire the fact that they're here because these are the fut, this is the future of our com, our, our, um, our county. These are the voices that you're gonna hear from in the future. I am tired of our community at, and, and, and by fact, and actually, I want to say that this is, um, it's, it's been going on since Saturday morning. It's been four days. We know that at least four people were picked up today. Over the weekend, we know of two other people in Buncombe County that were picked up. We have a group of people and community that is willing to step up with, with, with the community at large that have been, um, in Buncombe County and in Hendersonville. Hendersonville is by far the most people that has picked up immigration over this operation. This was an operation that was, that has been going on for, um, in the state for over a week and a half. And we're just now seeing the beginning of this. It's not gonna be over. We don't believe it's gonna end tonight. We don't believe it's gonna end up tomorrow. What we do know is it might go up until Friday. How many more people are you willing to let go of your community? What are you willing to do is my question to, to you? What is, what are you willing to do as commissioners of a county that does not believe in this kind of harassment? Does not believe in this kind of, um, of, uh, intimidation? And I, I'm saying this as a father, as a, as a son. I believe some, most of you, if not all of you, have family members. What are you gonna tell your kids right now? There are some family members that have, that, that have not seen their family, that have not seen their dad for a couple of days. They might not even ever see them. And some of these people that we know of had no criminal record whatsoever. The amount of, uh, increase that we have seen over this, uh, with these operations and since the, or, um, since this administrations has been, uh, rising highly. And there are so many violations that have occurred due to this, um, power that has been given to this agency. Uh, we're talking about a hundred and seventy-one percent increase on, um, deportations and, uh, detentions of individuals that had no criminal record whatsoever. That is huge. That is way more than, um, the, the past administration has ever made. So let's talk about some, um, uh, some criminal, some criminal activity that, uh, an immigr, that ICE has been, uh, making in our area. Let's talk about these violations that have occurred. That being said, what are you, um, taking consideration the traumas that have been occurring on these community members? I can't, I can't even tell you how many people right now have been calling, have been, um, reaching out because they don't know what the next days are gonna come or bring. We've also heard that, um, in the Buncombe County area and the schools, there have been either rumors or, um, or, um, concerns about, um, ICE being in the schools. We know that they're, they're, this is not something that they can do, but I, we know that they also have been intimidating our people, our community. So I am asking you, Commissioners, what are you willing to do for this community? For these folks that you might even know and might not even see them the next day? That's, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, yes, you may speak next.
The three of us are faith leaders here in the community and would like to request to speak together, if that's okay?
Sure. You can each have three minutes.
Okay.
No, they may each have three minutes.
My name is Missy Harrison. I am co-pastor of Circle of Mercy Congregation here in Asheville, and I live in Weaverville. We are here representing Faith for Justice, a group of faith leaders in Buncombe County. And the, we are here to read a statement that has been prepared by Faith for Justice on their behalf. The statement represents Reverend Tammy Forte Logan, Reverend Amy Cantrell with beloved community, Reverend Todd Donatelli at the Cathedral of All Souls Episcopal Church, Reverend Nancy Sehested from Circle of Mercy Congregation, and myself from Circle of Mercy, Rabbi Justin Goldstein, Reverend Sarah Wilcox, and Holly Roach Knight, uh, from the Transform Network. I'm gonna let the two of them introduce themselves.
And Rabbi Badshava Mayiri from Beth Atifila Congregation.
And Brian Ammons. I'm the chaplain at Warren Wilson College.
Faith for Justice of Asheville vehemently opposes the ongoing use of immigration, Customs Enforcement, ICE by the federal government. These actions are devastating to our community across Buncombe County and western North Carolina, this state, and this country. We are calling on the city of Asheville and Buncombe County to publicly condemn the ICE presence and their use of manipulative tactics against residents in our county. Portraying immigrant, immigrants and refugees as criminals and threats rather than seeing them as beloved children of God is immoral and un-American. We are called to love our neighbors as ourselves, and the criminalization and dehumanization of our immigrant siblings through ICE tactics and actions prevent us all from seeing their humanity, and we risk losing our own. It is immoral to track human beings down like animals in their places of residence, on their jobs, in their neighborhoods, while at the grocery store, and at their children's schools. Most of these community members are only deemed illegal because this country changed laws and policies to prevent them from remaining hereafter. We refused them for our own purposes. Many have been here for generations, like many of us.
The reality of our history in the U.S. is that-
May I, may I interrupt for just a moment? Because I just, I want us to just make sure we're following our protocol. So let's restart and give this gentleman three minutes as well. Thank you. Please continue.
The reality of our history in the U.S. is that this country's prosperity has been built on the backs of poor and disenfranchised immigrants who either sojourned here by choice or by force. As people of faith, we are called to care for those in need and love one another. And as leaders of this city and county, you are called to serve and protect all residents. We call on you to create sanctuary in Asheville and Buncombe County and stop allowing our immigrant neighbors to live in a constant state of fear and panic. We implore you, implore you to continue to model the very best of our values and our common humanity. Thank you.
All right.
I would like to just say one more thing. Uh, thank you to Bruno and Seema and the work that they have tirelessly done since Saturday when these raids have begun and, uh, the work that they have done organizing people, going to the sites where these raids are happening and documenting what is happening. And I'm just grateful for their presence among us and for them calling us to be community together.
Thank you. Michael?
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Michael Harney. As some of you know me, I work at the Western North Carolina AIDS Project. I teach Spanish at AB Tech and at Blue Ridge. Here, here to our immigrant population and those who are activists in our community. I, um, feel like we've seen a lot of, uh, good information tonight. We've heard a lot of good numbers. I want to add a few more. You know, my stance is all about needle exchange, about the vulnerable communities across the world, across our country and in our communities. So those who are incarcerated, those who are immigrants, those who are public sex workers, those who are, uh, men who have sex with men, those who are transgender people, those who, uh, are injecting drug users. And I still am going to talk a little bit more about injecting drug use in this community and the need for needle exchange. I know that it is a very costly, uh, uh, concept that, uh, that we would fund needle exchange through our health departments, whether the Buncombe County Health Department or all eighty-five county health departments in the state of North Carolina. The history of, uh, the reason for needle exchange came from the early part of the epidemic when, uh, about a third historically of all new HIV infections were related to the injection, uh, by dirty needles, shared needles because of the inaccessibility to needles. And so we have been able to bring that down at a national level to about eight or nine percent when we have implemented needle exchange programs comprehensively as part of harm reduction programs. In the state of North Carolina, I'm reading from the, um, HIV STD Hepatitis Surveillance Report, uh, by the Communicable Disease Branch, the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. Said last year, it's actually, uh, two thousand and sixteen, there were thirteen hundred and ninety-nine new case reports of HIV in this state. And we have about a five point eight percent of those new case reports are related directly to intravenous drug use. So people got HIV because of a dirty needle, because they couldn't have access to clean needles. And that represents only eighty-one cases, which doesn't sound like very much. But one person getting HIV is unnecessary in these dates and times. And at the lowball cost of three hundred thousand dollars estimated by the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, the total, uh, lifetime cost of an HIV infection at about three hundred thousand dollars. If we could prevent three of those infections, we're saving close to a million dollars. I heard there's a half a million dollar savings from the landfill, and I appreciate that. I'm not asking for that much money. I'm just wondering if we could figure out a way to logistically and legitimately fund needle exchange through our health departments, to see that people need access to, to needles for no matter what. I said it the last time I was before you, and I'll say it again, that we all need a blanket of protection. So not just for the immigrants, and I certainly think we need a blanket of protection for them, but for people who need access to needles, who have needles in their possession, that this not be, um, um, incarceration that we're looking at, that we're not gonna see this as a legal issue as much as a public health priority. And I thank you much, and I'll see you again soon.
Uh, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I'm gonna lighten this up a little bit. I'm a resident of northwestern Buncombe County, and we love our mountain home. It does have a few little setbacks, though. One of those being you have to drive thirty minutes to get anywhere, which is why we moved out there to start with. The second is access to, up until recently, internet. And I'm a computer guy, been, been one since nineteen seventy-eight when I built my first own digital computer. And if ever there was a community that fit the definition of digital deprived, Sandy mush was. Up until y'all generously gave us the grant, we've got internet there now. The children in the community can come down to the community center, they can get on the, uh, internet, get on, uh, Google Earth and walk the streets of Paris, go to France, go to anywhere they want to go. And, uh, definitely a benefit to everybody in the community. We're, we've had the usage of the, uh, internet now, as Mark was saying, it's increased tenfold since we first started out with it. It's really done a good job for us. The, uh, community center also set up with the grant money, a print system for the people. And there, I know you guys all have access to the internet. Hard to believe anybody today doesn't, but we had a lot of people that did not. And this, we really appreciate your grant, and I think she's putting in for another one. We'd like to see that approved as well. Thank you for your time. I know you guys probably ready to go home. I am too. Thank you.
Hey, and I'll, and-
This is my wife, Diane.
And I'm Diane. And hello, guys. How are y'all? Um, I just want to say, I am so enthusiastic about the kids in our community having the access to internet. I'm tutoring right now five homeschoolers that haven't worked on computers that much, and they are so excited about it because of y'all's contribute to our community. And also, we have GED students that are working very hard to get their GEDs so that our community is better for everyone. So I just want to thank y'all for my, your consideration and think about us little Sandy mush, our community. But the children are very excited, and we have one named Azia, and she wanted to tell y'all. While I was writing up my little thing, she said, well, tell them we're having fun on the computer too. So thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Barbara Vasallo. Uh, I know nine people have signed up for the GED, uh, AB Tech, uh, internet service, uh, that you have helped us get for the continuing of their education. I talked to two friends of mine this morning that are enrolled in the AB Tech online GED program at the Sandy mush Community Center. Sarah quit school in her senior year, six months away from graduating. She no longer could stand being bullied. Bradley quit school in his junior year. He could not keep up with the rest of his class and was too proud to ask for help. I asked them how important having access to the internet educational program is to them. Their responses were as follows. The Sandy mush Community Center is close to their homes. They feel safe at the center. It is, in fact, an old schoolhouse. They can study for six hours if they want to at a pace that is comfortable for them. They study with other friends in the program. They internet one another. They use Facebook to talk about going to the community center to actually study to get their, to get their GED. You've made that possible. They help, support, and encourage one another. There is always an educated volunteer to help them answer their questions and put them in a positive direction. They believe that the internet service provided at the Sandy mush Community Center will help them achieve the education they need for a better future. They are setting an example that others will follow. Please grant us the internet service needed for the future educational growth of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Yelton?
Sometimes y'all feel like the dog that chased the car. You caught it and caught him, how do you wish you had to caught it? Y'all solve the whole world's problems. You're supposed to stop the federal government. You're supposed to provide immediate ambulance service to everybody. I mean, I feel sorry for you all. That's why I ask simple questions. I am looking for the checkbook on the internet. I also sent an email to Mandy about, uh, going into closed session. The reason I did that is because- The reason I did that is because there hasn't been a tendency to hear client attorney privileges so much, that it appeared that that's what was going on, client attorney privileges. And then y'all put a little thing on your deal that I got to read, and it got me interested in it. And it said, "The policy of this state is that closed sessions shall be held only when required to permit a public body to act in the public interest as permitted in this section." That's one forty-three, three eighteen point eleven, and I'm sure your attorney knows it. And I look at your agenda today, and you'll see April the twenty-fourth, eight AM, commissioners will hold a special closed session per NCGS one four three, three eighteen, eleven A, six. And I got excited. That six tells you the exact reason that you can go into closed session. And I want to make the recommendation, and he said he's always done it, when you announce that exact reason that you're going into closed session, summarize that reason. Because there are six reasons, and the reason I want you to summarize it is, calling a closed session, a public body may hold a closed session only upon a motion duly made and adopted at an open meeting. Every motion, a motion to a closed meeting shall cite one or more of the permissible purposes listed in subsection A, which then entitles the numbers. So the bottom line is, if you will mention that and summarize it, it will educate the public. And you do have the permission, based upon the Institute of Government and another attorney's interpretation, you can do pretty darn well whatever you want to. But I think you all are trying to appear to be open and honest, and that would appear better to us in the public, because you get so much that you gotta handle, and you caught that dog, sometimes you sit up there, and you don't see what it sounds like out here, but I do want to second the fact that I think you need to look at your sound system. There should be a way to monitor the volume coming out, and that you should be able to magnify that volume, because when you get down real serious, and I got eight seconds left, when you get down real serious and start talking kinda calm and nice like that, I'm old, but you can't hear a thing back in the back room.
All right, thank you. Yes, the young lady. Did she, was she on the front row group that gave up her time? I'm sorry, we, we cannot. I'm sorry, we cannot do that, thank you for asking, though. Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board. You're getting paid for you tonight, you know, you're earning your money. Did you hear that? You're earning your money. I appreciate all these workshops.
Hey Jerry, I couldn't hear you, could you speak up a little bit?
Well, Don didn't say nothing, so I thought I was all right. Thank you, Joe. To a serious note here, child abuse, elder abuse, or any kind of abuse is wrong. I lost a child early on in my marriage, we've been married forty-nine years, and we lost a child. I know what that is to live with. My wife lost her dad to a murder. So she was fourteen years old. We took the mother-in-law in, kept her. We took a sister in, sister-in-law, that had committed, or tried to commit suicide. So I have lived the life of what abuse is. But we got to rise above that. And it ain't stopped me yet, and it ain't going to, 'cause I've got a little bit of trust in somebody other than a man, and that's the Lord. So my integrity is what I got. But what I do to help others is all that matters. If they don't know you care, nothing else matters. I think your staff will tell you that I've helped just as much as I've given. I might have give you a hard time, or it sounded that way, but I've given staff, I've given help, and I'll still do that. And I'm gonna do that. So I want to point out something to you. There's three things coming. Mental health and physical health is going to merge. The hospital is selling, and that's one point eight billion dollars if you ain't hurt. That lot come on premature. And the regionalization of DHHS and DSS is coming together, and that is going to be a meeting in April twenty-sixth at Western Carolina University. I want to see every one of you in there. There're gonna be a regionalization meeting, and you ain't gonna sit there and tell me that you don't have nothing to say, or you're letting the state supervise you. You better get your, you know, goggles off and your colored glasses off and go see the real world. They're gonna fix to lay it out to you, and you're not gonna think about it like you have in the past and tell me you don't have a hand in it. You're gonna have a big hand in it, and I ain't heard this talked about in this room about what we're talking about here. This has been going on since two thousand seventeen, and they need to be a workshop right here in Buncombe County on this and what the results look like in Buncombe County. And the judicial system is gonna be another. Talk to me, call me, I'll help you out.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, um, we do have a need for a closed session, so, Mr. Frew, tell us the reason.
General Statute, one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A, three, it's it's on. One forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A, three, an attorney-client matter, and I think what Mr. Yeltsin's looking for is the fact that no general policy matters will be discussed, it's, it's just to maintain the attorney-client privilege, and I anticipate no action from the board except for direction.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are going into closed session, we will return to open session, but we'll take no action when we do.